Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call attention to the Board of Selectmen's meeting and call it to order on May 10th, 2017. Tonight at 6 o'clock, we have weekly public discussion. After that, we have review school budget and the capital budget, vote and discuss on DEP's request regarding itself, recycling reserve fund request as submitted by the Ward Department and the Town Administrator to consider and review and act upon the final warrant of this special town meeting and the annual town meeting, and also vote on the omnibus budget for FY '18. With that being said, I'd like to ask if anybody's taping the meeting?
I am.
Free cam.
Okay. And I'd like everybody to stand and pledge allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag of holy stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The School Department, please. We'd like to review the School Department's budget request. There was a meeting the other evening. I was not able to attend. I was actually at a good friend's. We lost a son, but the meeting was held regardless, and I'd just like an update on that, and we need to talk about the school budget. So if one of you or Jack want to update me on what happened?
So we met the other night in Lakeville at the Lakeville Town Hall. All the scenarios when we had the new guidance numbers, all the scenarios were gone over against, like, once again. It was pretty much the consensus of the two town boards that we were looking at Scenario 3, which is a, from their request, it's a $1 million reduction from their request. It still is an increase of 2 percent, I believe. 5.24 percent over last year, which includes transportation. Superintendent for Schools and Mr. Baker both, at the meeting, they voiced their concerns to the amount level appropriation that the two towns were discussing.
So Scenario 3 would be a $1 million reduction to the school budget?
From what they're asking, not from the budget that's currently there. It's an increase in the budget they had from last year. It's a $1 million reduction from, from the 1.1 million dollar reduction from what they were asking for.
Okay. And is the, can anybody answer the question, was the Lakeville Finance Committee there?
No.
Okay. And does anybody know if the Lakeville Finance Committee and their Board of Selectmen agree on the number?
That wasn't discussed.
Okay. I just, I will be discussing that and know how it plays into all the other budgets tonight. I just want to be cautionary because the number that's requested from the School Department is in our budget right now and can be absorbed in our budget. So, nor, I, it can be absorbed, and, and we, and at some point, our town needs to step up for ourselves, and I'm just saying this out loud, and not always go along with what the town of Lakeville, I feel like they're leading the drive for us. And I think that, you know, at some point, we need to make a decision whether we're going to take care of our kids, or if we're going to always agree with what the town of Lakeville wants to do. That's my two cents. That's how I feel. You know, if we're giving every other department what they want, and I'm not saying the schools get what they want, because they certainly should not get their requested budget, but if we're giving every other department their requested budget, and we're not giving the schools close to their requested budget, and we're funding everything within, without taking money out of stabilization or free cash or anything else, then we need to look ourselves in the mirror and say, what are we doing for our kids?
I believe we requested that all of the budgets were submitted level funded. The school obviously doesn't level fund the budget. Contractually, that'd be a nightmare. They would have significant cuts all across the board. Even with this budget, they will have, will have cuts across the board.
Right.
But all our other budgets were asked to level fund.
And they're not.
Most are.
They're not. We'll go over that tonight, but you'll see that there's no, there's hardly any budget that we have, police, fire, highway. There's a lot of budgets within our town that are not level funded. They're level service, but they're not level funded. And there's a difference between level services and level funded. Level services are, that it's just the services that you have, and your budget doesn't go up. Level funded means that you level fund for the exact same number from last year. Level services, your, your, it will go up according to your contractual issues. So, I mean, we just have to make sure that what we're doing, do you know that we actually spend less money today than we did 10 and seven years ago in our school budget, by millions of dollars? I think that that is a significant, it's not like the cost of living has gone down or the cost of education has gone down. It's increased, and we're doing more with less, and at some point, somebody's going to stand up on town meeting floor, and they're going to say, you can afford this, why aren't you doing something more for the kids? And we'll end up at a joint town meeting. And I just want to be very cautionary on the way we proceed.
Okay. If I address a little bit more of what you're saying, Lisa?
Yep.
And my view is this, in a perfect world, yes, everybody gets what they want, okay? As the town government budget, you, you came in, you asked them to level fund, and then the funding amounts were added, it's basically collective bargaining with a few adjustments to actually operate the department in a manner that they can go forward. The School Department is going to be receiving over, over 3 percent increase. We have to remember where, you know, the tax levy can go up 2 and 1/2 percent plus growth. We're lucky in that we do have, right now, this year, we do have the room to move around. But if we don't grip, take a grip, take a hold on what's going on, then we aren't going to be in that situation going forward. That's one thing I think that we have to consider. The other thing I think we have to consider is that the Freetown-Lakeville School District is a partnership. The School Department, Lakeville's response is that the School Department's going to take all growth in the Lakeville tax assessments. If they do not have their budget request, then they're going to have to do something like an override. An override, at this time, I think is very precarious on their part. We have to think, okay, they, they want us to kind of bend to their, their will this time. In the past, we've been in their, their position, and we, we want Lakeville to bend to our will so that we're not going to decimate every other budget. So I think what the School Department has to, and I, I have this, this feeling that the School Department is basically sending us a bill and say, hey, pay it, okay? I, I don't see where there's work where they're saying, okay, we realize that we have, we can go up 2 and 1/2 percent, and then we have to work with the town, what's the growth, what's our share of that growth, and work from there. It's basically, we'll work out a budget, and here you go. And so for that re, for those reasons, I fully support the budget request reduction of a million dollars.
Just to be clear, it's, it's an increase on Freetown's portion of 442,597, 4.90 percent, plus transportation. Transportation, we don't control that. It is what it is. Overall, it's 551,670, $678 increase from last year's budget.
Because last year, we only gave $25,000 more to the school budget?
Correct.
Okay, that's ridiculous.
We, Lakeville's contribution this year is only 306,000, because they gave more last year, we gave less.
Right. But if you were to-
But we worked the formula.
If you were to average that out, then if you were averaging out last year and this year, I mean, we're not looking at a significant increase. And it just, you know, the pendulum always swings back and forth, and yeah, this year, our increase went up. Last year, it went down. Next year, ours will probably go down, and theirs will probably go back up. I'm just, if people look at our budget, parents and everything else look at our budget, and they say, you can afford this, be careful, because we could end up at a joint town meeting. We all know that. It's a, it's a, right? I mean, and-
That's right.
We don't need the override. And I can't speak for Lakeville's finances, because I don't know if they need the override.
That would be, that was their report.
Yes.
That's what they said?
Yes. And like I said, they were, the School Department is taking all growth money within their, within their budget.
Yeah, I don't, you know, we are, it's, this town is extremely lucky because of A, regionalization, and that's how we've been able to fund all the other budgets, because we're saving like a half million dollars a year. And B, like I said before, and I, and I need to print those out for you so you both can see, that we're actually spending a significant amount less than we were seven and 10 years ago.
Are you talking overall budget, significantly less, or per pupil budget, significantly less?
Overall budget, significantly.
So it's gone down from 45 million to 35 million? Is that what you're saying?
The Freetown portion of it.
So the Freetown portion of the budget, not the overall budget?
And one of the reasons we had, we got into regionalization, total regionalization, is to have a savings so that the rest of the town budget could have some wiggle room.
Right, and I'm to, I totally agree with that, but what I'm saying now is, now, you know, with all those new businesses that we have coming in, and, you know, having money in capital stabilization, having money in stabilization, and having free cash available to us, at some point, we need to step up, not for just the police and fire and every other department, but for the schools as well. And I think that, I'm, I'm just warn, I'm not disagreeing with either one of you. I'm like, if, if this is what we have to work with right now, that's fine, but we need to have future discussions, because if we don't come up a little bit, and we know we can afford to, then we're going to be with a black eye in our faces the night of a town meeting when they go forward, and you have a whole room full of parents in there fighting for the school budget. And that's not what I want to see at all. And I don't know where the Lakeville FinCom sits on this right now. And if Lakeville FinCom wants to give more than the Lakeville Board of Selectmen, that's another future discussion that we're going to have to have. Because if, if those two are not agreeing on the number, then we don't know where we're going.
Looking at possible future expansion, though, we, we have a failed building over the police station that we all agree that needs to be replaced soon. We're in the process of doing that now. We're looking possibly $7 million for that. The town hall is in disrepair. We, you saw the studies, just like we did, the feasibility studies, that needs to be repaired. We need probably a sewer line to do the town hall. Those are all issues that hopefully some of this money that we have, extra room, is going towards, so we can off, to free some of those costs.
Great. I, I agree with you, Bob. It's, it's time to push a little bit to the town side.
Charlie. We have been.
Well, but, no, I, I mean, I mean, with buildings, I mean, Lisa, in the last 45 years, almost all we have done in, in capital expenditures is schools. We've had to-
Totally agree.
I understand. But now, we're in, we're in a position where those buildings, the school buildings are stable, we're stable in school buildings. We have to go and turn to, to the other side, okay? I, I'm with you, I'm completely with you in that, hey, it'd be nice, we, we really should be sitting down as two communities and the School District, and coming up with a long-range plan. I don't mean a year or two, I mean a 10-year plan, okay? And Mr. Medeiris, that's, that's my view, okay? All right? But I have a problem when it's basically, we're going to keep a level services budget when, and ignore the, the actual finances that are there, what's there to actually work with. And when you're, when you're coming in with almost a proposal that's almost, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, almost 8 percent above last year, that's not, that's not sustainable, okay? We have to come up, I, I'm for education. I'm not going to say, you know, I'm not somebody, them teachers or anything like that. What I'm, but what I'm saying is, we have to have a stable foundation to work from. And right now, we're not there.
So just, just, and I agree. In 2008, the town of Freetown spent $11,632,000. In 2016, the town of Freetown spent $9,565,586.
That number was including our own elementary school that we owned at the time, plus regionalization-
Plus region, yep.
Plus out of, out of district.
Plus special ed.
And if we're working in that, we're, if you're working that way, Lisa, also, you got to remember that I think we're paying on the elementary school out of tax dollars about $141,000.
The elementary school?
Yes, the elementary school bond. Okay? So that's a, that's a, that's a, a figure that's in the mix here, too.
Prior to regionalization.
Yes. We all, we still owe the elementary school, we're still paying the elementary school bond. That's another $141,000 that should be added to that. You know, if it was real, we're going to go orange to orange.
I'm not just, great, but I, but overall, we're spending almost $2 million less today than we were in 2008. That's craziness to me. So I'm not saying that we need to give the schools everything that they want, no. And I'm not saying that we don't have buildings to take care of. I think we're actually stepping up and taking care of that. We actually have a fair amount in our stabilization, and we've created a capital stabilization to take care of things like, oh, $660,000 for a water department bill. So I mean, we are extremely fortunate to do that. What, I'm just saying that at some point, we need to take care of our own students, and if Lakeville has a problem with that, then they needs to, they need to step up. Because if they can't afford it, they're doing something wrong. We must be doing something right, because we can afford everything. That's all.
Well, I'll, I'll agree with you that we've been, in the last, oh, half decade at least, we've been able to do things because we've had extra money.
Yeah.
To, to be perfectly honest with you, Lisa, the Scenario 3 wouldn't have been my pick, okay, the other night. But I, I think we have to stay, we have to stick together as two communities, because if we don't, we're going to have, you know, we're going to have chaos. And planning, sitting down, planning together, planning for the far future, I, I think that's something that we haven't done in the past. That should be done. But I, I think we just, we have to kind of say, hey, Lakeville, if they say they can't pay this bill, and they, basically they approve it, then we're going to have a, we have to deal with it. Because to, to, it wouldn't, I don't, I wouldn't want Lakeville to throw us into the scenario where we're going to a joint town meeting, where we're being forced to either have a 2 and 1/2 override, or drastically cut other town services to pay for the schools.
Again, though, I know what you're saying, Charlie, and I would totally agree with you if we couldn't afford it, but we can, and that's a problem.
What we can afford, Lisa-
Right, but-
But Lakeville can afford it.
Just like they were doing to us, was it 10, 15 years ago?
Oh, they've done it many times.
They were trying to force us into a, an override.
They've, they've, I've been to many joint town meetings, and they're not pretty.
And I, and it, right, they're not, and here's, I think we have to avoid that. In, in the future, yes, hopefully we can, we can do better.
But are we, are we going to always wait to make, to see what Lakeville can afford, or are we going to make a decision that our kids are that much more important, that we're going to step up and say, okay, we're going to give you $50,000 more? We may even give you $100,000 more. And then, Lakeville has a stabilization fund, I'm sure. They have other avenues. I mean, to throw out, oh, we're going to need an override is disingenuous.
You really want to, you really want to fund a budget from stabilization?
No, I don't. But that's, that's not my problem.
That's a problem, I think, that the School Department has had in the past, is that they have funded educational programs, operating budget, the E and D, instead of just putting capital.
And they continue to do that, because the two towns have not stepped up to fund the budget. So all I'm saying is that be careful, because if people know that we can afford it, be careful what happens on town meeting floor. It's not going to hurt any of the other departments. I'm just, I'm just saying, like, we need, and we also, how about this, we can agree on that number tonight, possibly, but if the Lakeville FinCom and the Lakeville Board of Selectmen don't agree on a number, they're going to have to come back to us, or we're going to have to go to them, and we're going to have to agree with one or the other.
Well, Lisa, if the townspeople want to kick in more money, it's happening in other, other communities.
Right.
And that's their option. They want to come to a town meeting, and they, they want to do it, that's their option. But I, I wouldn't recommend it, okay? Not, not at this point, okay? Down the road, if things continue to be that way, we have to, we have to deal with it. If we can't come, come to a meeting of the minds on a budget between Lakeville and Freetown and the District, in a long-term plan, then, you know, we're going to have a problem.
Right. And everything I'm saying to you guys tonight is everything that I totally would have said the other night. You know that, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Because I'm not afraid to say that.
But I'm, I'm just saying, I, I think that we wouldn't want to be in Lakeville's shoes. And so, in, in the past, you know, there's been a little bit of that, and I think we should get away from that, and work, try to work through it.
Actually, the past six years or so, we've, we've gone to town meetings with a solid number that we both agreed on, so there's no question about that. We have not played the town, you know, joint town meeting game, so, no, I'm just saying-
And I know, but as we all know, Lisa, there's a history. And history burns, burns in people's hearts and minds.
Okay. Does the School Department have anything to say?
Would you go ahead and discuss, Sullivan? I don't, I, I'm curious to hear what scenario you would have chosen. You've read that it wasn't chosen, and I won't put you on the spot.
I was, I was asked a question at the candidates forum, and I would give, I'm going to give the same response. I would vote, I would vote my conscience at the time. I voted my conscience last night. And I, and I, I will admit, Mr. Medeiris, that it would not be this scenario if I, you know, if I had my way. But, but I know there's elements that I have to, I have to look at, and the thing is, I, I think, but my biggest element is we have to have cooperation between the two communities.
First of all, I appreciate the opportunity and just the willingness to keep that open mind. We still have a month or so before, before town meeting to make that final determination. I was at the Lakeville, I don't speak for either of those boards, obviously representing the School Department, but I sat and listened to that group, and there is some discussion between those two, two boards in Lakeville in relation. I just would like to point out to this group here, in Freetown, we're providing a level service budget, and my understanding is all the departments have provided that level service budget in Freetown, and that those budgets are being supported. So although our increase is significant, it's predictable to be significant, because we're the largest organization. If you take all of your departments combined, and all of your employees combined, it doesn't pale in comparison to the number of school employees we have. So anytime it, obviously, an increase happens, and you have level service budget with contract obligations for the schools, it's going to be a larger figure. I simply would ask for your consideration in the coming weeks, whether it be the FinCom here, at any opportunity, I'd be happy to come back. I think it's significant, you know, we do what's best for the Freetown Elementary School, for the kids here in this town, and obviously for the regional piece, and I would ask for that consideration, be happy to answer any specific questions. The E and D piece, just in, just for some history, when I came here three years ago, not a lot of my predecessors can say three and four or five years over this, over the time, there was a criticism, though, that there was too much money sitting in the E and D, and so it was difficult for the School District to ask for increases, even though there are complex contractual obligations, because we had about $1.2 million. So the thought process was that we'll start rolling some of that E and D to bring down the assessment for each town, and we're really kind of at a stage now, especially with some of the special education costs, you know, unforeseen circumstances at relatively low. But it was part of a pack, package and an understanding that the town said, we will build it in. It's not sustainable, and I certainly would welcome kind of a vision of five or 10 years. I think I certainly, as we get through this budget process for '18, I think for '19 and '20, as we start contract obligations with all our groups, I certainly would welcome Freetown, Lakeville, and the School Department getting together, because I think that would be something that would really help the process, because it's not going to go away after '18, right, once we resolve this. But I will say that we need a short-term solution, because as I said to the Lakeville group, and both you gentlemen heard the other day, the decisions and the reductions that we're going to make are going to devastate classes and programs and services for kids. And I don't think anybody here wants to see that happen, and that's my concern. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Do you want to hold on the capital budget and do that when we're sitting on the real budgets? You guys are right with that?
That's fine.
Okay. So we'll do, discuss, vote, discuss DEP's request regarding Excel and recycling. I know you guys both read the email.
Yes.
Okay.
Myself this time, before the discussion starts.
Thanks.
I don't want to be, we will be stepping out shortly. We have a school committee meeting, actually, in the elementary school.
All right.
Do you want to brief us to do? Do you want to make a couple minutes?
Do you guys want to leave?
You don't want to interrupt? That's okay.
Yeah, go, yeah, absolutely.
Please, thank you.
We won't hold you hostage. You don't want to be held for ransom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Could have been worse.
Could have been a lot worse. Okay. So the reason why I have this on the agenda, just so everybody here wants, is informed, I guess there's been a problem, and Jack, you can pick up at any point, or Robbie, with getting the testing done, because they need dry conditions and things like that. So there was sort of a request that we extend the license for another 30 days, and I can't make that decision by myself. But I also certainly think that before we make a decision, we really need to have a one-night meeting that is just only Excel, so we can really give it its due diligence, so we can make an informed decision at that, at that time. I don't think that, you know, having the Excel people and/or the residents within an hour's time is going to give everybody the representation that they need. So all I do, all I want to say is that I think that we need to give it its own meaning. I don't want to put our board at that.
Yeah. You've seen my emails, I don't know, you've seen my emails, but I've sent emails to DEP. I was kind of frustrated that this testing was supposed to be done at the end of April. So we would have all the results in by this, hopefully this meeting, and we could have a review and, and decide, make a decision on what we're going to do with Excel on the 31st, by the 31st. So where, it stopped, we started getting delays for, because they didn't have stuff in place in time, and they, other delays, and I finally sent a letter saying, an email to Kevin, which he followed, followed up and sent it over to DEP, saying, you know, let's get this done. We had rain dates, the weather was bad on the original date, it should have been the next day, it was a rain date, the weather caught up, it was a beautiful, ended up being a beautiful day, still nothing. So after a flurry of emails back and forth and apologies, they finally went out last week and did the-
On the 4th.
On the 4th, and did the, the study. Now they wanted to process the data. Well, that's why we were hoping to have a month between when they did the test and now to process the data. So it's all coming to a head here. I agree with you, we should have a night where we can have an open discussion, everybody can be heard, we've gotten all your emails, you've done a good job sending them to DEP, they've gotten your emails, they've gotten your complaints, they've been trying to verify also, Kevin's been out to verify any chance he gets, he's available to verify, sometimes it's late at night. That's another concern I want to talk about at that meeting, is hours of operation, because we specifically put hours of operation in here. We've gotten noise complaints after hours of operation, some before, but I have an email from the, the Police Department, they, one of them was, one of the neighbor organizations on operations, I should say, organizations- one of the neighbor organizations, operations, I should say, organizations, one of the neighbor operations were, was opened up at five, five o'clock in the morning. They're not under this noise ordinance, and they're not under the hours of operation. So, they, they were legally open for business, doing, taking in, I guess it was canister bottles, I believe it was, the, the police report said. But I agree with you, we need a night to have this all out, get as much information from DEP we can. I don't know where they're gonna be in their shakeout process, the 4th was only last, last week, so I wanna give the DEP enough time to get as much information as possible, so they can have, we can have something for that meeting to hang our hat on.
But we could also do, we could also put restrictions on the license, and then put added restrictions on the license once the testing comes back as well.
And that might be what we'd end up doing on, on that meeting.
That's what I think.
How is that 29th, that, that?
That, that Memorial Day weekend.
Oh, you said it. So, the Tuesday would be the 30th?
The Tuesday's the 30th, which is the day before the license, or the 22nd, but that might be too short.
I'd rather give them as much time as possible, so the 30th, I think, would be.
Okay, we'll do 30th, May 30th at 6:00?
6:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m.
Here, or do you wanna do the elementary school?
This is big, I mean.
This is gonna be the only thing on the agenda, just gonna be DEP.
This is gonna be just this.
We don't have a regular meeting scheduled, so this is only gonna be Excel, the residents, DEP.
So, what about shutting them down?
That'll be determined on that night, whether we renew it the next day or not.
I've got a question about the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I love you guys, but can we do one at a time, so you can all listen to one another? I'm not gonna yell at you, I promise.
Okay.
Okay. Kevin, have you gone to the back of the play shit, down on railroad tracks?
Yes, I walked on the tracks yesterday, and.
Lot of debris?
Actually, the debris that's, there's really no debris on their side, Excel side, so they did their part on cleaning up. Here and there, you see a little piece of, looks like foil or whatever it is. I, I got permission to be on 36, 40, and 46, and I walked along those properties, and I saw some debris.
What about the gas line? You walked out?
Where exactly, how far is that, where is that?
Between railroad tracks and the, and the residents' high street.
His wall.
I walked all the way past Excel, and then I made it back into where the dirt roads, where people look like they ATV or, or dirt bike. And I made sure I stood on the properties that gave me permission to directly abut them, so. I did see some debris, and from, from speaking to Mr. Marty Costa, he said that he's more than happy to remove that debris if they would allow him to be on their property.
This is in my lawn, and if everybody else's lawn wrong, on Alexander Drive.
If you could forward that email to Kevin, we'd have a rundown.
This is what's on the gas line.
That was today?
Yeah, these are today, trash bags hanging from the trees.
Yeah, now, when I, when I, when I look at the debris, I'm looking at.
The little pieces of the plaza.
A plastic, little cellophane thing.
Tons of that.
Yeah, there, there is, plus, just so you know, there's multiple cups and bottles and bla, trash bags.
And it all blew out of that thing while they were making that place.
I think that's more of a dumping site, than what they have.
Who would dump all the way down there and dump?
Have you ever been on the Excel site?
No.
So, when you, anybody that's been on the Excel site, you, as you walk on the property, you will see some of that little foil and that, that, that debris.
Yeah.
You don't see the cups and the plastic bags and.
Because before, with the walls up, it all blew through. They never gone to pick anything up.
I can't verify that. I can only verify what I.
You tell me when you come and see it hanging in my trees, you say, I can't tell you whether it came from there.
I can't verify that a Walmart bag came from that establishment. I can verify what they crush and what comes out of there was that.
The pieces of plastic, the little pieces of plastic.
Looked like the streaming thing with a little.
With that streaming thing with the long silver thing.
Definitely would, I would say it came from there.
Okay, there's tons of it there on the gas line. I can't see, you can't see that. There's tons of that.
Mark, can you go, take a, take a ride down tomorrow?
Yeah.
It's the, it's between the railroad tracks and where the property stops, is that cleared, cleared.
This is what Excel sounds like.
I think I stopped right at the end and went back.
Standing on the railroad track.
I stopped right at the wooden fence and I went back. I'll, I'll go again.
You go over, over the railroad tracks and stand on the gas line and just look, I mean, yeah, the bushes are all growing up now, so you really don't, you know, you can still see it, and the plastic thing's turning black, so it makes you even harder to see it now. I mean, there's tons and tons of it.
Yeah, like I said, I did, I did see some of this debris, and he's willing to clean it up.
I mean, look at it all.
They can't go on their property.
Are you okay?
Yeah, and I took pictures myself yesterday, yeah.
I mean, should I call the inspector? I was going to gas, and tell him that they got trash all over the gas line to come pick it up?
Kevin, Kevin, you're gonna go by there tomorrow, right?
As I stated, when I spoke to Mr. Marty Costa, and I told him that there was debris still back there, he said, I'll go clean it up. The problem is, are they gonna allow that? So, my letter to the, those three residents, those abutting properties, is gonna state that. Can he go clean that up? Besides that, if he doesn't, if they don't allow them, then that debris remains, and then we'll get blown into other people's properties.
Okay.
That's my concern.
I agree with what you're saying about the allowance of letting them on the land, but there shouldn't be debris to begin with.
And that's why he decided originally.
So, so that's the first problem, right? So, we need to get hold of why there is debris, whether it needs the filters on the top, or whatever, whatever's going on over there.
That's what the DEP just told me. He says, we'll, we'll, we'll do a monitoring thing and see if it's coming out of his stack, but that's all it ended up on, on everybody's property.
Because it's light and it.
Seriously, three months, three months later, you're gonna do a study now to find out if it's.
Right.
I haven't seen any new issues of debris, but I, I do, I do admit that debris came from them, and it's still there in the woods.
It still runs up to my lawn every, every week. It's still getting there.
When, when you see debris again, call me and I'll, I'll go out there. But again, it's hard for me to say that.
You stopped over two weeks ago. I was mowing the grass two weeks ago, and you picked up the piece out of the lawn.
I guess, but I, again, when I went to the site, I didn't see anything blowing around.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody else?
I don't know.
I have a question on the testing.
You can stand. Can you just state your name?
Michael Senna, I live 16 Alexander Drive.
Thank you.
When they're doing the testing, is there a pile there that is just like aluminum, and they're throwing in aluminum? Or are they actually throwing in the crankcases that are, or the heavy steel that is making the noise?
DEP would speak to that better, but Kevin, you were on site.
Yeah, I was on site on the 4th, and from what I, they had actually two piles of metals. They had one that was from CMAAS in Cavanta that was actually burnt before, that they, they took out of the, out of CMAAS. So, that pile was. Yeah, okay, and then the other pile, so they would actually take from each pile. What was in there was just a mixture of all, you name it, was, was in there.
Did they actually show you a car go?
I saw, I saw one vehicle went in there, it was crushed.
Did you look in and see if the motor was still in it?
Well, this is what he, this is what the crane operator did, 'cause Dan DeSavio from DEP and I was, was, we sat on the wall while we were watching everything. The crane operator would literally take things and look like he was looking at it, so he flipped the car over, checked it a few times, and then put it on the conveyor, and.
To see maybe if.
Mr. Marty Costa told me, what he's doing, yeah, what he's doing there is checking to see if there's any, whatever it is, a radiator, whatever it is, something that's in there still that would leak out. So, I said, okay.
When the testing was done, did you actually see a motor go on the belt and go through the machine?
I saw, I saw different metals go in, and I saw a crushed vehicle. I didn't see any motors. It was, it was a crushed vehicle. I don't know what else to tell you.
DEP's the one that.
It was a flattened out vehicle.
When we sat down.
You know, different debris is gonna make different sounds, so on that day, if you have no motors or anything that's gonna make that type of sound, you're not gonna get that type of noise.
Right.
DEP was responsible for doing the testing, wasn't a town in Freetown, we don't have that per view. But DEP said that, that when they sat down with us, that they were gonna try, 'cause I said the same thing. Well, they're controlling what they run through there. If they're running through tin, light metals, you're not gonna hear any. They said, no, we're gonna have a cross-section of everything that they say that they, they, they're, they grind, they're grinding. So, it's gonna be heavy metals, it's gonna be cars, 'cause I said the same thing. Well, if you don't have a car going through, what's the point? 'Cause that's what they're gonna be crushing.
Well, you could have the car go through without the motor, it's gonna give you a totally different sound.
Correct. And aluminum motors are gonna make a different sound than a cast motor, that's gonna make a different sound than a magnesium, absolutely.
This vehicle was, it was probably this thick. It was smashed. It was like, it was just one cube of vehicle.
Again, it's a DEP specs.
Yeah, but it was the whole vehicle that went through, but it was, it was flattened out.
Yeah, but last week, there was no noise. When they did the test, when DEP was over my house on, on High Street, and he was at Excel, I, I lived there. I know how the noise is day in and day out. Not every day it's loud, not every day. Okay, so, the test that I did last week, if we are waiting for, for those results for last week, might as well just give them the license.
Yeah.
Just hand it to them right now.
Okay, because it was like, didn't even exist. It's a slap in our face, because we, I listen to it every day. Today, at 1:00 in the afternoon, and yesterday, there was like a big explosion. I called John Costa, the son, and I said, listen, 'cause he gave me his number, he says, listen, there was a big explosion. My basement is six feet under the ground, and I barely can hear nothing, unless it's a really bad noise, and my dog jumped off the couch. Okay, so, if we are waiting, if we are waiting for the results that they did last week, DEP, and, and they had their own company, might as well just give them the license. Go ahead and waste, don't waste nobody's time, because it's like, it's a, it's.
It's like they weren't running here.
I live there every day. The noise is, the noise hasn't changed. The noise has no change, the bang's still the same. I called Kevin many times, and the, 'cause last, we, we got aggravated, me and this guy behind me, and, and somebody else, I forgot who it was. We went to Excel because we said, listen, they're, they're doing the test, but it's not the same noise. So, it's, I don't know, I don't know what to say. Marty said it's because of the weather. So, he said, it's the weather, if the clouds are low, if it's raining, the material is wet, it, it makes, it makes a lot more noise. So, I said, okay, I, I'm not an engineer, I don't know this. So, I go home, listen to this, I go home. An hour later, my neighbor, Peter, Pedro calls me, says, Joe, come outside. It's the same weather, it's no rain. You should've heard, you should've heard it, it was a different ballgame. And Kevin has witnessed this over and over and, and over, and the odor of rust and oil in the air has no change, has no change. We need the town to step in and do something, okay? We, I've been in that house for 14 years, I never went through this, and I pay my taxes. And we need you guys to step up and, and do something, because this noise is not going away. We're not complaining, the noise level that we had last Wednesday, we wouldn't complain, we wouldn't be here if that was the noise level.
In your opinion, has it gotten any better with the, the new improvements that they've done?
Absolutely.
None.
Absolutely not. Some days, some days you don't even know they exist. Some days, they bad. I'm, I'm telling you, my basement is six feet underground, if I can hear them, them crushing and explosions, which I, I asked Marty, what's exploding, he says, there's no explosions. What do you mean, there's no explosions?
Worse than a train.
No, it's, 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 it's not a dumping, it's not a dumping.
It's an explosion.
It's an explosion.
It's an explosion. I mean, we're not.
They shred propane tanks.
And we were, we were promised by, you know, talked to Kevin many, I talked to Kevin many times, I go to the town many times, and I've been told by the, the town administrator, and he says, listen, before, when springtime comes, this will be solved. Well, guy, uh, guess what? Summertime is coming, and we're still dealing with the same bull, and nothing is getting done. So, I don't know, why, why extend their license? Why? They gotta fix it.
The reason why I, I started, when, when the complaints first came in, I said, make sure they all go to DEP. The reason for that is so we can stop building a case for ultimately they don't fix their, their act, termination of their license. And that's what this is all leading up to. You can't just clo, go close a business tomorrow, 'cause there's a complaint. But the more complaints we can document, the more things that we can prove, the more we can step in and say, fix it, or we close you.
Well, DB, DEP was here twice today.
So, that's what we're, that's what we're in the process of doing.
Correct.
I mean, it's not like we're trying, just trying to keep them open against you guys, that's not my will at all.
I understand that.
It's just to try to set up something that we can have an actual cause, if we need to go through the legal system, and if it all results in ultimate closure, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna go through the legal system and, and take appropriate steps. We also don't wanna put the town in jeopardy.
No. Remember this, too. The only stipulation that they have on their license right now is just the hours of operation.
That's it.
So, if, and I'm not saying yes or no.
And that wasn't even on the original application.
Right. If we were to give them a license, there would be major, I would feel that this board is willing to put major stipulations on that license. So, now you have a criteria in which if they don't, if they don't live up to that criteria or those measures, now we also have more to sink our teeth into, to shut them down when we need to.
Give us an example, please, of stipulation.
We're outside of our, we're outside of the.
Yeah.
The posted meet, what the reason for this meeting was, but I've said in the past what my, my.
All we're worried about is.
I said in the past what I'd like to see.
And you're gonna get false data in your hands.
Well, I believe what DEP gives us. I, I don't think the DEP's gonna lie to us, that's what you're.
Can you add a little bit? You've witnessed it many, many times.
I reported, it's all public, I'm, I'm not, on that, on that day, I reported that I have gone out numerous times. And like Mr. Branco said, there have been times where it's been quiet, and there have been times where I've documented loud rumbling or, or banging, or whatever it is. So, each time was different, but on this day, on this particular day, on the 4th, it was relatively quiet. I left Excel site, I went over to Alexander first, and I was listening to, you know, they had just put the car in, and I, I left, and I, and they, you know, that's, that's right. They dumped another load, so I knew they were gonna put more stuff in. I came around, it was quiet, then I went over to High Street, to the other testing site, which I thought was gonna be louder, 'cause that's where the highest elevation is. That was quiet, and that's what I reported.
Now, when you say faulty results, you're not saying that, that.
What have you witnessed in the past, Kevin? Give them a picture of.
Excuse me, sir, can I ask you a question?
Very important that you hear this part.
When you say false results, are you saying that you think DEP's cooking the books, or do you think just the sound conditions, 'cause of the day?
It, it, it really blows my mind, 'cause Dan was at my property today, okay? As soon as he got to the property, it's, it's too quiet.
So, you're saying now he's cooking the books, or you're saying?
I'm gonna be following him at 9:30.
Just 'cause of that weather conditions, it was, it was quiet weather conditions.
Yeah, no, no, weather conditions, but an hour later.
Are these all individuals saying, yeah?
I'm asking what, what your opinion is with you. You're saying DEP, we can't trust DEP, 'cause they're not, they're not telling us the truth. Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, one thing that I believe everybody would be uncomfortable with is Excel's hiring their own independent company to monitor what they're doing. That's number one, that conflicts.
That's wrong.
The ultimate outcome.
That's a conflict of interest in itself.
It's up to DP how they decide to force their role.
But it's very easy for Excel.
It's their test, they are. Everyone's running the test.
They are, they are, don't get me wrong, they came down side by side, okay, but they are not so-called sound testers.
No, they're supposed to hire.
So, any data they gather will not stand up in court. It has to be an independent.
Those questions.
Now, why don't we, why, why doesn't a town step up and hire an independent sound testing company?
We don't have the enforcement for that. We don't have the red mechanisms, the 10 decibels are set, set by state statute for, and DEP's supposed to be enforcing those. That, and, and the emissions, all this emissions is all supposed to be enforced by DEP. So, that's why we're trying to force DEP.
Something that, is, they, they don't have anything accurate in measure.
I believe that DEP's acting within the law, and I don't believe that they're trying to cook the books.
Is there any way we can have DEP doing unscheduled visits?
Supposedly, they are planning on doing unannounced.
Tomorrow, 9:30. They've done it, because it's easy to manipulate a pile to make certain sounds. I mean, Excel's not still on it. He's gonna get rid of all of that stuff that makes sounds at a.
And that's why I asked the same question, 'cause I said, well, if they know you're coming, you're gonna be running lights dealer, it's not gonna make the same noise.
The day before.
That's common sense, and they, DEP assured us that they were gonna run a cross-sample, they were gonna force them to run a cross-sample of everything they run through that shop.
The day, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say something. The day that the schedule was for DEP and that private company to go to my house on High Street and Excel, the day before that, they were running like 100%, and it was like comparing day and night. And I even told my neighbor here, I told him, and I told Pedro, you watch tomorrow, there's gonna be nothing going on. And when, and Kevin, you know, I don't know Kevin from a hole in the wall, he's witnessed this many times over, 'cause he goes over to my house three, four times a week, 'cause I make the car.
Let me say, like I, like Mr. Branco said, there are times where I've heard, like he mentioned, no noise, or very little noise, too. to louder noise, and all I can say is that that particular day was quiet.
And I'm talking loud, I'm not talking just...
Okay, hold on. I'm gonna request that Bob get in touch with DEP tomorrow. And I don't want DEP to tell anybody that they're going. Not our offices.
They have to. But they're gonna come onto our properties, they have to.
They can tell him.
And the property.
And he can, and he can let you know, okay? Because I don't want anybody who's affiliated with XL in any way, whatever, to know when DEP's coming. Not my office, not anybody here. So, then that way, it's clean. So, now, we don't know, so we can't, you can't say that, you know, we're letting them... We wanna make sure that it's done correctly, the right way, and it should be done, I'm not gonna say secret to the belief, but without, without anybody knowing. So, there is no tip-off, and there's no one who can say that there's been a tip-off.
But there are some days that they are running, and DEP is not running any tasks or nobody else, and it's, the noise is very minimal. This morning was minimal.
See, leave the sound monitoring on there for a week and see what happens over a week's period.
That's what I mentioned to him.
I'd like to see that.
They're also gonna do some stat tests.
Without announcing, they show up and saying, "You mind if we put this on your property for a week?" You say, "No." You don't tell your neighbors or anything, and it runs for a week and we see what happens.
Can they run the shredd inside a building after five o'clock?
They're not supposed to be operating after, no, I'm sorry, they're not supposed to be operating after seven o'clock.
After seven o'clock?
On our permit, on the DEP permit, I believe it's eleven to, what's DEP's requirement for shredder?
For the shredder or the indoors?
DEP shredder. The shredder's got certain hours it can run. Through DEP, they've shrunk it down.
The one inside the building, the doors...
I don't know.
All right. So, are you all, you all right with having that meeting on the...
The thirtieth.
Thirtieth, okay.
Twenty ninth, whatever we said.
Thirty.
Thirty, twenty, it's a late day, right?
Yeah.
Thirty.
Which day is it?
Tuesday, the thirtieth, six P M. here.
Do you want it here, or do you want it at the elementary school?
Do it at the elementary school if you want to go to the elementary school.
And we'll have more seating in case we have more people.
That's fine.
I'm not saying that we're gonna get tons more people, but we don't know.
I can try to get more.
You know, that's one thing I can probably say, you know, I can bet on and win.
School committee might be mad at us now, so who knows?
Let me answer another question. Do you know what they're doing as fast as possible?
Yes, that's out of my realm.
No, you're not supposed to be...
Just make sure, you know, come prepared to that meeting, make sure you have your questions that you wanna ask DEP. I'm sure they're gonna be there, they'll be responsive. You know, anything that you can think of. I really think that this meeting is gonna be, just so you guys, we can all hash this out, and this board, well, the two of us, can make an informed decision on which direction we're gonna go in, okay? All right, thank you.
So, May thirtieth, six o'clock.
May thirtieth, six o'clock at the elementary school.
What do you want to do at the elementary school? There's more seating.
Okay? All right, thank you. You might wanna wait.
What did you, what did Charlie do? Oh, so? Oh. Hello. I don't see...
Ah, Charlie, you're there, huh? You're all pumped up over there. Hey, guys, excuse me. So, we'll hold on until that, until the end of the meeting, because we don't have anything. Did you see this, Charlie? So, we have a reserve question, a reserve on four, six five nine, the water sewer. Well, the town can contribute at any point if it feels that it wants to do that.
Well, they are allowed by statute, come to the town asking money, and we don't have to give it to them. They're not excluded from doing that.
But on that, I kinda have to agree with George in general. And I think we really, we have a long discussion about option B of that problem.
I agree.
And this, just while we're here, I don't know if I'm gonna be out or not. I have a lot of questions about how it becomes an unforeseen expense.
This?
Yes.
Yeah, so do you wanna wait until Bob Haka shows up?
Can I ask a question? I can understand an emergency. Responsible for the town to place an investment towards this expense, but as a loan, can the town sue the other?
That'd be Kim's question.
That's a Kim question. We have a little money to departments, so no. Does that feel right to me?
I don't, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I can tell, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
You either subsidize or you don't. You don't own. It's really not an option.
I mean, the other option. Are you guys, did you call your meeting to order?
We're not posted.
Oh, you're not posted?
We don't have a quorum anyway, so...
Okay.
Simply we can talk to you, but we can't...
So, you're up to full seven now you say that. You did say that earlier, so you're over four. And you're not posted anyhow, if you had a quorum? All right.
All right, so why don't we hold on this water thing until Bob Haka comes in, and then we do have another reserve?
Well, if you guys both have concerns about whether it should be on here or not, why don't we just send it to a special town meeting? If it's voted down on the floor, gets voted down on the floor, they have to come up with the money otherwise.
The other question I had, we're asking it...
I mean, sorry, I mean, both of you, you and Charlie.
What are you, cut now?
You know, I just don't, because we're having the conversation, I don't wanna make it sound like we're colluding with the members of the finance committee. No, I don't believe that's...
You want to add an emotion?
Well...
No, we can just disregard it, we don't even need to take it up.
I have another question. The enterprise does have almost the amount needed, a short couple of thousand dollars or something. And I don't know what else they need that money's for, but there is an amount that's close to what they need in their fund.
For the sixty-five or the...
Sixty-five nine?
Or the six hundred and sixty?
No, 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 we're talking about the sixty-nine for the transfer.
The sixty-five, okay.
Sixty-five, and I think that's in their budget, right? I mean, they have...
No, they have sixty-one thousand in retained earnings that could be appropriated for this purpose if it were an article on town meeting floor.
Exactly, that's what I was...
Okay. And Kim, do they have to release those funds, or is it...
Town meeting must devote to do it.
Right, okay. So, the town meeting can say, "We're gonna fund this out of your enterprise fund."
Yeah, somebody could amend the article to read that.
It would have to be an article.
Okay.
I mean, there is an article, but the article is written that it's coming out of stabilization, so it would have to be amended.
Did you change the article?
Well, if they submitted the article and they're an elected board, I don't think I do know.
That would be amended on the floor if there was a change.
Although the articles are set in stone now.
That's what tide is for.
Yeah, that's what we're doing tonight.
You can't change it tonight?
Well, it's up to you, but it's submitted by an elected board, so...
You can change that on the town meeting floor. You can't change the submitted out.
Okay, somebody else did.
What is the, what is the change?
No change, instead of taking it out of stabilization, taking it out of the water sewer enterprise, or the water enterprise.
But the amount's not going up, it's just coming from a different, okay?
Yeah.
And it might even be, some of it might come from one and some of it might come from the other, because they don't have enough right now in it.
I couldn't hear all of it, I thought maybe...
Oh, come on down!
Oh, I don't wanna get that close.
Oh.
Oh, come on.
But why not? Thank you. Gary, you can't sit out there by yourself?
Guess I can.
Come sit next to Kim. Pass her tissues if she needs some.
All right, and then we have a reserve request for town council in the amount of ten thousand eight oh seven oh one.
Motion to Senator Finkham.
Do you have a second?
Second, in favor?
Okay, that's not on our agenda, obviously.
No, because you guys don't have a meeting, so we'll have to forward that to you.
The next time, yeah.
I believe it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Our next meeting's twenty-nine.
Okay.
We could've done the water one, but we can't do it legally. That's one interesting thing.
When I send a hearing out, we'll be all...
Yeah, I got you. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, budgets.
Where do you wanna start?
At the very beginning.
First, there was dinosaurs.
So, you just wanna do the ones that we had holes on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make it easy. It's up to, I mean, Charlie, if you don't mind that.
Oh, you don't, this is your first time, right? Okay.
You have to vote on every single one of those?
Huh?
You have to vote on every single one of them?
Right.
No, we can vote on the whole thing at the end. Once we submit all the changes, we can vote on the missed budget with the changes that we've all agree on.
I think that's all we did last year.
Yeah. So, we don't have to vote on every single line item.
All right. So, is everybody all right with town moderator? Sorry. Is everybody all right with the town moderator, or do we wanna...
Now, he's closer.
He can defend his position.
Okay, everybody good? All right, selectmen eighty-two, seven eighty-six, fifty-two, everybody good? All right, town administrator, one eighty-two, five forty-five, twenty.
Well, we had that discussion with the one twenty-five, so... I'm good with that.
I disagree. That's okay. I think it's...
It doesn't mean we have to spend that, it means that it's in the budget.
No, but then again, now we're just taking money and leaving it in certain budgets that we're probably not gonna use, and now it takes away from something else.
Once we hire, we pick it up, if we hire somebody at a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten, we pick it up next year and put it back where it belongs. What I understand is...
It's, the budget is inflated by about fifteen thousand dollars.
When you say inflate...
That one, you mean?
One eighty-two?
Yeah. And you don't think that somebody's gonna get up on town meeting floor? First of all, they're gonna say that we don't need a town administrator, which we all know is not, not true.
They say that every time since we've...
Right. But they're also gonna say, like, they're gonna look at one eighteen, and then they're gonna look at one eighty-two, and they're gonna flip.
I don't, I don't think they're gonna do that at all, Lisa. Okay? The fact of the matter is, one twenty-five, for a town administrator, is a reasonable range. And that money's gotta be saved. Lisa.
Don't yell.
No, no, but, but Lisa.
I've been really happy with the not yelling, so...
But Lisa, but...
Go ahead.
You're gonna save, this town is gonna save clearly, easily, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year by having a permanent, full-time town administrator.
Charlie?
Charlie, should we list a bunch of things that have gone wrong in the last ten years, that cost us...
By having a town administrator?
No, by not having...
That's my point.
Exactly.
That's my point. Okay, right.
No, I don't actually, I don't. Because at the end of the day, it comes down to the board of selectmen, right? And at the end of the day, I mean, I, believe me, guys, I'm not saying that we don't need a full-time town administrator, but what I'm saying is that, and the whole package shouldn't be one twenty-five, but what I'm saying is that in this budget, there's, they're doubling up on stuff, all right? I have gone through four town administrators, three town administrators. I know, I know.
What would you prefer to say?
I definitely think it's inflated by about ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
So, ten thousand puts it one seventy-two, five forty-five, twenty?
I even say one seventy, leave it at one seventy-five, that's a more doable number. I think people look at that and they're like, "Okay." I think that people look at one eighty-two and they think it's closer to one ninety, and they have a heart attack.
Just one, one thing.
Go ahead, honey.
All right, yeah. Serious.
Let's be simple.
No, I am, no, I am.
The thing is, you just, you hire, Jack, I'm not saying anything derogatory to you, I'm just... You have an experienced town administrator, okay? A question comes up that, oh, I don't know, we call Copeland and Page. When an experienced town administrator can very often answer that question before goes to Copeland and Page. Just one, just one possible example. The, you have an issue personnel-wise. The experienced town administrator handles that personnel problem at the beginning. You save yourself money, okay? We can, we can go on, we can go on and list invariably, invariably, times when you're going to save money, or you're not gonna have a problem, or it's gonna be nipped in the bud because you have an experienced town administrator. To get an experienced town administrator, they're gonna want, they're gonna want comparable pay with other communities.
Charlie?
One twenty-five is comparable pay with other communities.
Charlie, we have about one twenty-five right now, okay? Right? And we have barely three, and it's not because...
Oh, I don't, I don't agree with you there.
We have three people that meet, maybe three, two definitely, maybe three, that meet the qualifications of our bylaw. And it's not the salary.
The whatever.
People...
I don't...
Our bylaw's too restrictive. Our bylaw is very restrictive.
A bylaw requires the person to have either a master's degree in public administration, a law degree, or a master's degree in business administration, okay? Five years' experience in government, okay? The, I don't agree that we only have three. I will agree that we, I'm surprised that we don't have more. We have plenty of applicants, unfortunately, either they don't have the master's degree, or they don't have the experience. Why we don't have the experience in government, which I think is very important. So, I see around nine that fit the bylaw. Some of them, hey, they fit, they fit the bylaw. Pardon me, but a man from New Jersey, is he likely to come in the end? We don't know. But we don't, but we haven't tried. We haven't, we haven't...
Right, which is up for discussion, but I don't, I mean, which is up for when we meet an executive session and talk about, so I just wanted to...
But, I mean, I don't, I don't see a problem with putting that money aside. And if we get somebody, and they're willing to do it at a hundred thousand dollars, all right. Then we have twenty-five thousand dollars that... Then we have twenty-five thousand dollars that go, goes to free cash next year.
I agree with you, Charlie, I know, I think you get what you pay for, you don't know that.
Your, your point isn't necessarily to the hundred and twenty-five thousand, you think your whole budget's.
Yeah.
So it's not necessarily that we're off the hundred and twenty-five thousand, you think.
Well, where, 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 Lisa, would we go? I mean, and I, I don't mean that, I, I mean, I, I just want to know. I, I can't say that I have looked at every line of the administrative budget to see what, what's what. I think Jack put together a budget that he thought was, you know, available, what, what should be, what would you cut that? I'd say. Not, if you see something, I have no problem with what you're performing, what you see.
One twenty-five.
Lisa, the other night you thought about thirty-two fifty, that might have been doubled somehow.
Yeah, there's, there, I mean, one twenty-five is a total package for a town administrator, and now we're, we have, you know, two thousand dollars in training, and we have twelve hundred in professional development, I mean, that's all part of that one twenty-five. That, that's still salary towards that one twenty-five, so that's what I'm saying, some of these things are doubled up.
Are you saying those numbers you just threw out? Off of the one twenty-five?
They want to get a separate stipend she was, she's saying.
Yeah, they get a, yes, yeah.
No, okay. Jack, if I may ask, in building that budget, is that two thousand dollars in meetings and training, is that, is that for like, things like, such as travel, or paying for seminars, paying for trim and up?
A lot of it is the MMA unit.
Okay, how much is that, Jack?
Well, again, it's, it's about, right, about two grand.
Jack, as an administrator, what is your opinion?
I think, I think it's a realistic budget.
Realistic, the way that?
Is there five thousand extra you think you, you could cut out of here and not feel it?
If I thought that, I wouldn't have put it in the first.
Okay.
Just remember, I've negotiated his contract, the guy before him, the contract, the guy before him, the contract, so I know how to negotiate the contracts and what's involved in it, that's all.
Nobody's questioning.
No, you can leave it alone, I'm just telling you, it's overinflated, this budget is way overinflated. Thank you, Jack, next. No, I'm all set.
Charlie, would you be comfortable taking another five thousand out of that budget, be that one? Do you want to be the one seventy-five?
No, leave it alone, leave it alone. No, it's fine. It's just like, I feel like people are looking at me like, you don't know what you're talking about. I've been here fifteen years, I do know what I'm talking about.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you, that I think you don't know what you're talking about at all, I'm, I think you wouldn't. Yeah, I think we're, we're coming at this at a different viewpoint, and we're, we're not, we're not signing a contract off to pay this whole amount tonight. Whatever, whatever happens, we don't know what's going to happen exactly down the road with the town administrator, what we might need, I think to have, that budget isn't unreasonable.
I just want to say that in the last, mm, I don't know, ten years or so, this town's doing very well.
I, I'll, I'll agree, compared to, to some of the things I've, I've lived through, I'll, I'll agree immensely. I think that if we want to keep on that road, Lisa, we want to keep on that.
Okay. So the next thing is finance committee, fifteen hundred dollars. You guys?
I mean, it's okay the way it is, but if you want to show you something, if you can give us some clerical backup in town hall, we wouldn't need as much in payroll.
Meaning?
How many, how much on the hour was you, you talking?
What we would need is tape recorders, we could tape the meeting, and then have somebody in town hall type up the notes. Not alone, I don't think we have ten meetings a year. And that's the biggest part of it, and then a few bucks worth of supplies over there. But I mean, we would need to, to have somebody contact for us in the town hall, and we could call and say, could you get this ready for us, or whatever, you know, to keep track of things. Send emails out to the board, I mean, it's not that much.
Are you talking about replacing the lowest with somebody in town hall, or?
But it would be more efficient. And if you don't have anybody, then we'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. You're strapped, right, Ellie?
Which one is the select?
Finance committee.
We're on finance.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know that.
One thirty-one.
One thirty-one.
I wanted to look at the select, the actual.
One twenty-two.
One twenty-two, one, that, one twenty-two.
So.
We'll pass it. Another date. Another date we discuss that.
Let's leave it, and then let's look at talking to, talking to somebody in town hall and seeing if we can do some of that stuff. But I think that within your expense line item, you should be able to buy tape recorders and stuff, correct?
I thought we.
Yeah.
Got to already tape record. I don't know.
I, I've never seen, I thought, I thought we.
Okay. I had never okayed, so if there is one, I don't know.
Well, if you, if you don't know where it is, we should find it and find out what's going on.
It's finance committee property.
I, I thought we had a discussion and we told those to go get one.
I hadn't seen it.
And I, I would say I haven't seen it either, and I don't know what happened, or if there was one, there should have been one.
I mean, she did submit anything that I saw.
Okay.
All right, then we need to find that out, because.
Well, if she hasn't, I, I would go on the web and say, nothing's been purchased.
Okay. And is she still interested in, in working, or?
Probably, I'm just trying to.
No, I know, I, I know.
Save a little bit here.
I'm trying to save too.
She never said anything to us that she didn't want to continue.
All right.
My knowledge.
But let's see if we can pick up some of that stuff at town hall, and, and then we'll figure it out. Our reserve fund.
Right, we're keeping the fifteen hundred.
Is one twenty-five.
Reserve fund, we dropped it to one twenty-five, is everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Town accountant, one oh eight, five sixty-one, everybody okay? Okay, town audits, nineteen five, everybody okay? All right, assessors. Do we have, do we know when she is retiring? Jack, do you know?
She hasn't given her advance notice, I know that. And she didn't make it sound like it was imminent, but she did, the way she presented it was, they need to have three budget cycles to get everything in, so she was trying to get somebody up front. Three budget cycles, because they come in threes or something, and the way it processes now, they all hit the same way.
She's the only office that is all alone, also.
Is she alone, or does she get? But no, but the Florida goes down there when she needs help, right?
Yeah, yeah. Not to learn the job.
They're not learning the job, that's the issue, I just, they're just, not to be obnoxious, but the town hall body to cover the office. That's her phone, that's about it, so. We have to flow.
Tim's the town hall floor.
And how many hours were we talking about again, maybe like that it's a year?
Who's that, nineteen?
I mean, does she really need somebody in there for nineteen hours, or can we start off at like fifteen hours and see how that goes, and if there is warrant, then, I mean, then bump it up next year, I mean.
I don't think she was complaining about the workload as much as she was complaining, she was saying, we don't put somebody in the place to stop learning the job, if something happens to her, we'll be, we'll be lost.
Right, but do we need somebody in there for twenty hours?
Fifteen's fine, you want to do fifteen, let's do fifteen. We work the number for fifteen? I agree with that.
No, we should, we're moving that way.
The way I would look at it is, not so much fifteen hours a week for, how many weeks do we really need somebody in there?
Well, they would, we'd put them there to learn the job, they need to learn all the facets of the job.
Yeah.
So I, more to Lisa's point, I'd rather have them in there every week, but just limit the hours, so, and if it works out, we can increase the hours and.
The only thing I would be cautious of is that if somebody's looking for a full-time job, which they would be to replace her, and you offer them fifteen hours a week, they probably won't take the position.
Most of them are full timers, it's kind of how they stop coming in and they work their way into a full-time position. And if they don't work out, we have a mechanism to move on. So I agree with fifteen hours.
So what's the number?
What's the pay rate for?
She didn't provide that detail, she just has.
First step, first. First, that would be a first step clerk, right?
I don't think that's how she budgeted, but. No, it's not how she budgeted it, I got it right here.
What kind of background are you looking for, this? More background?
Not my, not my.
Well, the assessment's accurate, personally. That's much, I don't even know what's involved.
She has nineteen, oh, she, she used step five at eighteen seventy-five.
You want to use that number?
Step five at eighteen seventy-five?
She can tie it, but if you want.
She can tie it to me, too.
Actually, in July, step five is eighteen eighty-five.
What?
Because I'm at step five, so I'm saying, in July, the step five rate is eighteen eighty-five, not eighteen seventy-five.
Why would they come in at step five?
Unless it's a special requirement.
They would have somebody in mind.
Somebody's already in town hall audit certain step, as opposed to cramming off the street. Attention.
See, when you get too close, everybody loses.
So the question is fifteen hours, do you want?
Fifteen hours in.
Do you want to start them at what her suggestion is, do you want to start at that first step?
I don't think anybody in town hall is at first step, is that correct?
Say that's correct.
Yeah.
Well, normally, if they hire somebody from town hall, we have to raise to.
Which is something that we need to, which is something that, again.
CBA needs to clarify.
We need to talk about in executive session because it's that, this is that slippery slope that, that got started, and now, it's like, I've never, it's.
And that needs to be fixed in CBA, and when we come back up, so we can clarify.
So, we can use the eighteen seventy-five at fifteen hours.
So. Fourteen six eighty-two would be the amount.
Fourteen sixty-eight.
Which would be a reduction, she has nineteen six oh four budgeted.
Yeah, almost five thousand reduction.
So a deduction of four thousand nine twenty-two.
So just.
So we're doing?
Do you want to reduce it just? Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you do this one? The fifteen, fifteen thousand.
What's the final number?
Fourteen six eight two.
Fourteen sixty-two.
Would be the, the amount in the budget, so it's a reduction of four thousand nine twenty-two from what we asked for.
So what's the final figure on your assessment?
Uh, ninety-four thousand two twenty-seven.
Ninety-four two two seven. Town treasurer.
Yep. So this budget was kind of all crazy.
Those six sixteen increase for postage.
So, but she reduced the budget because she had an extra person in there.
Yep.
So her budget should be one eighty eight sixty-seven, is that?
Yeah.
Kim, forty-eight?
No, she, she reduced the wages by the extra person, so it brought it down to one fifty three oh one forty-eight. So the total for the department with the six hundred and sixteen dollar increase in postage is one eighty-two eight sixty-seven. Are, are you looking to cut more out of the personnel?
I had one eighty-two eight sixty-seven, but then I thought that she put two, I wasn't sure about the two thousand dollars, she had it in and then she took it out, so I wasn't sure what she was doing with that.
That's still in there, that educational career incentive stipend, two thousand still there.
Right, she had it in and then she had an extra, so I wasn't sure if she was keeping it or getting rid of it, so.
It's still in there, so did you?
No, I don't care, we can leave it in there, that's fine, I just wasn't sure what she was doing. So the budget is one eighty-two eight sixty-seven. Everybody all right?
Less than I. Well, Mike, I see what you're saying across all.
Yeah. So that's why it was either one eighty eight sixty-seven or one eighty-two, because I went over these budgets the other night and was pulling out of them, so. Okay, our legal fees, a hundred thousand?
I'm good keeping that.
Oh, but if we get a good town administrator, we're not going to need all that money in there.
Well, we might not.
We got stuff in process now, it's going to take time to resolve.
We'll have money for free cash.
Uh, okay.
We can, maybe we can, next year we can push like go along, the school department.
Stay with a hundred, right?
Stay with a hundred, yeah.
Yeah. Especially with, you know, Excel and that, we have some other things, so. All right, um. Management info systems, fifty thousand.
I suppose Vadar Cloud.
I still don't know what this.
I pulled the seventeen, I'm not sure what you guys are looking at.
What?
The fif- the seventeen to ten is replacing equipment, I pulled that out and put it in capital for you guys to discuss as capital.
Okay.
So right now, the operating budget would be thirty-two seven ninety, which would include, which would include going to Vadar Cloud in case of six thousand nine ninety. So that's really the, the increase over the last year.
All right, so instead of the fifty, it is thirty-two?
Thirty-two seven ninety.
Okay.
I don't know what the.
What did you say, Ellie? Did you just say fifty thousand?
Yeah, in her budget, two thousand eighteen request says fifty thousand, including six nine nine oh for Vadar Cloud, and seventy-one seventy for replacement equipment. Budget one fifty-five.
But there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about what was that replacement equipment, so I had pulled that out, so you guys could talk about it as part of capital rather than part of the operating, but I thought you had the updated budget.
Okay.
Well, I'm still working off the ones we had all on the website, so that's why I'm.
Okay.
Bear with us.
All right, tax title for, for closure, fifteen five, we're all set with that. Town clerk. What's, what's pleasure on that one?
She's asking for two percent increase, plus fifteen hundred for master records.
Right, plus promoting Cheryl to assistant town clerk at ten thousand three fifty-nine.
Yep. Yeah, it's fine.
All right, primaries and elections, we're all set.
Registration.
Registration, we're all set. Conservation commission, twelve seven seven nine, are we all set with that?
Porter Johnson.
Porter Johnson. Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Could be the cold meds, but I'm just trying to keep up here. You're going to want to total it.
How do you know that?
I was told to make sure I could do that, so. Okay, I'm ready. Okay, I'm ready for planning.
Okay. Planning, fifty-two seven fifty-four fifty-eight. Everybody okay with that?
Good with that.
Okay.
I'm going to accuse myself of that.
All right, we're voting on the whole total budget anyway, so it's a...
I'm not going to put my input in, so...
All right, um, zoning board of appeals, we're all set. Soil board, we're all set. Um, public buildings and maintenance. We're all set.
Yeah, it's just six nineteen, CBA, right?
Property insurance, two percent increase, two point five percent increase, we're all set. Town report, thirty-five, all set. Sorry, now we're good. Total general government?
One million, three twenty-five, four seventy-two oh six.
Can you say it one more time, Kim? I'm sorry.
One million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and six cents.
Let's cut someone's budget by six cents.
And the police are up!
No, it's got to be in general government.
That was the moderator.
You need some white socks.
All right, uh, police, one million, nine forty-one oh thirty-four ten. Everybody else at?
Yep.
Uh, separate, oh, Philip, is the dog in there?
Yes.
Yes.
But we, we separated it, correct?
It's going to have its own line item within the budget for overtime.
All right, perfect.
Two ten.
Okay.
Page four of ten.
Communications, two eighty-nine, four fifty-seven, forty-two.
That's CBA, yeah.
All right, um, fire, one million, one eighty-three, nine sixty-seven. Um, and then medical, medical building, sixteen thousand. How is that working?
Billion.
Ah, so far so good.
Can we have a report on that? Thank you. And how it's...
It's only been since January. They're just starting to get ramped up now, so I...
Well, right now, they're not...
I would push it up to probably after July, maybe.
Yeah, that's fine.
Your secretary's still there, though, right?
She's still there. She's, she retired in next January.
Next January.
Next January.
That's where it's supposed to be, the savings.
So you're not going to, you're not replacing Deb?
We're going to replace her with, with somebody.
Okay.
But I think, to be honest with you, what I envision is us being able to share her with somebody else, that position with somebody else. And I think, let me back up. Our busiest time for the court is between December and May during burn season, when people coming in day to day on the burn bridge. After that, we have a little lull, where I think now that Emma's going is gone, we may be able to rotate that personnel to help, like, other people out.
Okay.
And then bring them back if we need them. I want to work that out with personnel.
Okay. All right, um, building department, everybody okay? Gas, we're okay. And plumbing, we're okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Twelve contract, I think, four of us.
Electrical, we're all set. Civil defense, I'm going to slow down, Kim. Sorry.
I like the enthusiasm.
We're doing it for you so you can get out of here as soon as possible.
I want it, I told myself eight o'clock tonight. It's not going to work. Um, animal control, we're okay. Uh, forestry?
A dollar amount for Maurice.
Right. And he still has no warrant article, correct?
No.
Okay.
So we don't have to worry about that being spent.
Harbor master, we're all set. So total public safety?
Chain should be the solid three six five seven?
Uh, three million, six sixty-one, zero nine zero point nine three.
So that went up by four thousand dollars?
Yes, that's the canine.
Ah, the canine, I'm sorry. Got a whole, got a separate warrant articles going to turn on.
Okay, um, school committee stipends, all right. So this is where these numbers are changing?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
What got in school committee?
No.
Think they're mad at us now.
Do you get a double stipend?
Get a four four two four.
If you like those people, be upset they don't get anything.
Yeah.
We tried that one, it didn't fly.
I'm still shocked that we didn't sell them.
Okay, schools. Do you have those new numbers from the other night? Or, I mean, I wasn't there, so I didn't, nobody forwarded those to you? Okay.
Um, I do have... I don't have a scenario three. I, I just have this sheet.
All right, I'll give you some ways.
Are we submitting scenario three?
I have an extra copy here. It's a weekend.
I think it's, it's enough of a floating room. Circle, Kim.
Well, wait, what is step? It is...
Don't worry. Whatever, it makes me feel good.
Okay, maybe I can pass that back, because I can't make heads or tails of that. If someone could just tell me what you want to put in for the supplement, and the transportation and the debt, that would be better.
Well, it's not even broken out.
This is the first page, I might use.
Okay.
Right there.
But that's not, is that scenario three? No, that's a school formation request.
Original request.
It's too bad she's not listed.
Yeah, there's, I mean, those.
I mean, I'm pretty sure I, the transportation, I guess, on this sheet is three eight nine. So what is, okay, what is this giving you? Okay, so the allocation is going to be, assessment is going to be nine?
Are you going with that scenario three?
Okay, so...
Sylvia.
Ten million, zero eight nine, five one zero for the school budget or the district.
Ten million, zero eight nine?
Five one zero.
Five one zero.
That's for education?
Yeah.
Yeah, just for the re, just for the town acre.
Right, three oh one, right.
Ten million, oh, eight nine, five two six.
Ten what?
Schools asking ten million, four twenty-four, seven sixty-six.
Oh, eighty-nine, five ten.
Okay.
I have an update for Bristol Agricultural.
Yep.
Um, it's going to be, I don't know, if you guys want copies, they sent out, um, an update. It's going to be twenty-one thousand, one seventy. There are ten students. So it's actually a decrease overall, because the number of students have gone down from seventeen to ten. Thank you.
Okay, Noel Colony is one million, eight ninety-seven, four eighty-five?
Yeah, I've reached out to them. I have not gotten a response from them. I'm not sure what their issue is. Um, if there is an issue selling their amounts or what, we have no actual update from them. So again, this is still a best guess?
Yeah, well, the state's set to tuition, so I'm wondering if they're still waiting for that.
It could be.
That, so, um, and our student enrollment shouldn't go up because we're stuck on that, that number, so...
Right.
Okay, um, what is the final educational?
So we're at twelve million, twelve thousand, five hundred eighty-nine.
How much was the old colony again, Kim, if you don't mind, please?
Um, it's estimated at one million, eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, four eighty-five. And that's basically a two percent increase based on the amount requested from last year.
Okay. Um, highway changed, correct?
So we have those. Did you get new numbers from them?
Yeah.
They want to share?
Yeah.
Somebody put in retirement.
Is it in here?
Five thousand one hundred and ten.
It's in the, uh...
It's in the email.
It's in the email, I know, but is it...
Five thousand one hundred and ten.
Oh, you think it is? Ally, did you have that taken or did I just put that up?
Five thousand one hundred and ten, it went up.
Five thousand one hundred and ten dollars.
It's just in the personnel?
Yeah.
Across the line, yeah.
Oh, it always goes over that. Goes over that by...
Wasn't more than that.
Right.
By January.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a first dollar, Nikki, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're all set with the five percent for the highways, are you correct? Okay.
All right, so what's the figure on highway now, Kim, please?
Four five seven zero three three.
Four five seven zero three three.
All right.
Slowly moving.
Snow, ice, we're all set.
Yep.
Street lighting, all set.
There is a minute.
Somebody keeps shooting them out right here. I don't know.
We're all set with trash? You okay with trash?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, transfer station, one sixty-five, five thirty-six.
What's the... Are they asking for another part-time person? Is that what that is?
No, it's just when the full-time person has to be out for sick or vacation. If it happens to be a day that, uh, the part-time person isn't there, that person has to cover that full-time person's shift. If the station's going to stay open, so there's extra money in there to pay that person to do it.
That budget's bigger than that.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Um, health inspection, I mean cemetery, twenty-two one fifty-five.
No change.
All right, total public works?
One million, two hundred seventy thousand, one thirty-two point three two.
All right, health inspection?
Good, two dollars maintenance.
Okay, so this afternoon, Bruce called me and they want to go meet with him, and that whole budget is changed. So just FYI.
Is that all, then?
Yes. So I'm sorry, is help all set? Or no?
Health is good, yeah.
Health is good.
Yeah, council on the evening, that was going to be an issue anyway, so...
I met with, um, I met with Bruce this afternoon.
Yep.
And, um, he wants to level fund all of the electric, the heat, the net meter, all of that, not the net meter, but the telephone. He wants to level fund all those budgets back down to what they were. He's going to take that money out of the grant. I have it for you, Kim. I'll show it to you. But he would like to, um, add, um, a part-time person at fifteen hours in the amount of thirteen eight oh three.
Just curious, what is that in the grade scale? The thirteen...
I don't have that answer. I don't have, you mean like as far as the step and level? I don't have that answer.
So is he reducing his budget, the one sixty-one nine one nine, by the roughly four thousand dollars?
He's reducing his budget by us, quite a lot. And I, like I said, I just met with him, um, so...
Well, if he's...
He just wants us to, he's going to take care of all the other stuff. And he wants us...
To add fifteen hours.
He's asking us to add the other person at fifteen hours.
The person that we gave him last year that they were paying out of the grant.
Out of the grant. Now they're going to take care of everything else out of the grant, the electricity, blah, blah, blah. But they just want us to, if, asking us if we would pick up the thirteen eight oh three. She had it in for nineteen hours, but they don't need the nineteen hours. They only need the fifteen hours or sixteen hours at, because that's what she is currently, whoever's working here.
Yeah, she's working sixteen. So, so basically, they're asking for a level funded budget from last year, except for they want the fifteen hours...
Right.
Person.
Right, and sixteen hours.
Sixteen hour person.
Thirteen eight oh three, correct. And then one other thing, they have that senior, senior, uh, um, program, the, the computer program, that they need to pay every year, um, and that is seventeen twenty-five. So that's an annual dues that they have to pay.
So what's our total number?
I have no idea. I'm sorry, I couldn't try to... You want me to just level fund it?
It should be the one thirty-seven eight twenty-two.
Level fund it. Am I changing his request? Is that what you...
Yes, yes.
Changing the department request? So you want it to be level funded for last year for expenses at nineteen two oh four?
Plus seventeen twenty-five. Plus seventeen twenty-five.
Well, and the one eighteen six eighty, the one eighteen six eighteen oh six, right?
So twenty thousand nine twenty-nine for expenses.
That's expenses. Now we're doing personnel.
And it looks like for the clerical, you, they have requested fifty thousand nine oh five, but you're saying they don't need that much for the...
Take last year's level budget, one eighteen six eighteen oh six.
No, but you can't do that. There's contractual increases. I can't do that. You can't. You have to go from, um...
Contractual increases, twenty-seven thirty-five.
So they ask for sixteen thousand, three ten for the clerical person.
They only need thirteen eight oh three.
Thirteen eight oh three, and sixteen. So take out two thousand, five oh seven from the personnel.
And I had a question. Did you, go ahead when you're done.
Okay.
So the director, um, goes up thirty-seven twenty-six this year?
Director goes up...
Three thousand, seven twenty-six? Bruce wasn't sure if that...
Between, um... Yeah, because part of it is, um, the bylaw and part of it, I believe, is her longevity. She, her annual, including the longevity, is fifty-seven thousand, eight twenty-eight. But I have to put the longevity. I can't put that as part of, so yes, that, that would be, that is what's in there.
Okay.
We just break it out differently because we put the longevity in a separate line, but...
All right, and do you want this or no?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay.
So I, I took out, let me just make sure I do what you wanted. I took out two thousand, five oh seven from personnel. That dropped the sixteen, the sixteen, three ten down to thirteen...
Eight oh three.
Eight oh three. And then I added, I made, I level funded the expenses at, sorry, nineteen two oh four from last year, plus I added seventeen twenty-five.
Right.
Okay, so the new department request is one fifty-six oh eighty-five.
Okay. All right, everybody all right with that now?
Yes.
Okay. Veterans services, we're all set on one eighty-seven fifty, Memorial and Veterans Day, twenty-two hundred. So total health and human services is?
Four hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred seventy-nine.
Okay, library.
So they had submitted a revised budget?
Yep.
For you guys? So right now, the personnel is ninety-seven oh eighty-eight, expenses are thirty-nine oh eighty-five, for a total of one thirty-six, one seventy-three. So the expenses went up by three fifteen for the sales assessment, the contractual increases are one thousand five ninety-five, the bylaw increase, one thousand and thirty-six, and they're increasing, um, the twenty-hour employee to the thirty-hours, for nine thousand seven fifty.
I thought you said... Yeah, all right, so, say that again? Just tell me about the employees again? We're adding a part-time person in there for ten hours.
Um...
Or, okay. I'll look too. Didn't we talk about that, we said you don't really need all of that? Right.
But we did increase hours on the other person there.
We did.
And then we added a ten hour person.
Ten hours, correct.
The other person added ten hours instead of a new person.
We did originally.
Okay.
And then...
My memory's faulty, so I forget.
They put in for another ten hour person to cover shifts when...
And to open up the li, the library, more hours on both sides of town.
Yeah.
But I didn't think it was supposed to go up that much.
In this description, it says ten to fifteen hours.
Right, and then when we, they were here, we said ten, she said, I would be fine with just ten hours.
Just ten hours.
That's what she said.
You're right.
So that should be reduced, not increased.
Unless it's a different submission.
Thought maybe the debt student or raise or something.
She did, but then she, but, um, Kim fixed it.
Okay.
The bylaws in there. All right.
She's got Althea.
Twenty.
My stomach is growling, I hear it. I haven't eaten.
Yeah, there is a, I'm sorry, there, yeah, there's a library check in there, I guess I just don't have it in the explanation.
You want one?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Feel free.
I'm good, I'm good.
Today? Not for you.
No, just me.
For him.
Casey's now at thirty hours a week.
Right. George, I'm not trying to be fresh, I'm just stretching my leg out. Hamstrings trying his cramp on me. Actually, that'd cry. It's a ugly sight.
No, just me, just me. And then there is a ten hour, she's got a ten hour person.
Ten hour on top of that, right. That should be an entry.
Fourteen seventy-six per hour. Yep, that includes the extra ten hour person. Ten hours added to Casey and ten ex, extra hours for an employee. Ninety-seven thousand oh eighty-eight. So there's the director, there's Althea, director for twenty hours, Althea for twenty hours, Casey for thirty hours, and the new hire for ten hours.
I don't know.
And so that's personnel, how much is personnel now?
Ninety-seven thousand oh eighty-eight.
More than she was asking for, and she was asking for fifteen?
I am.
Very sore.
But she, when she was asking for that, she didn't have Casey in there at ten, at thirty, only at twenty.
So that's the difference in the ten hours.
So another ten and then another ten, so now we've got twenty extra.
That clears it up, okay.
So the final number?
Uh, for library?
One thirty-six.
One thirty-six, one seventy-three.
And then we're all set all the way down, right? Uh, no, we're not.
Historical.
Historical's gotta go back down to five hundred.
Five hundred. The twelve thousand's going through capital approved, uh...
It's in the capital.
Okay. No, thank you.
So total culture and recreation, one forty-five, ninety-seven eight.
Okay. Everything else, all the way on the speed.
I'm good, I'm good too.
Everything up, all the way down, right? Did anything else change? I don't think so.
We're going one nine...
Retirement.
Nine eleven through nine ninety-six.
Well, the other department, did we lay people off? Justice casekeeper.
Yeah, workers comp is up.
Workers comp is up?
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, sometimes you gotta...
Yeah, as a claimant.
So what is that?
Fifteen twenty-five. Workers comp.
Uh, nine months.
Health insurance, everybody else out with health insurance?
Let's just slow down for a second. That's okay.
No problems.
So are you changing workers comp?
Yeah.
From the eighty thousand four sixty thousand?
That doesn't include the ten percent, that, that ten percent increase doesn't include the workers comp?
Yeah.
So what do you want to do?
Then that has to go up by fifteen, twenty, fifty.
But is, is a ten percent increase?
Yeah.
That doesn't cover it?
No, it doesn't, no.
No, ten percent's not enough.
Fifteen twenty-five, fifty?
Yep.
So what's the new number?
Eighty-one thousand nine eighty-nine fifty?
Eighty-one ninety-nine fifty.
Unclaim it? Will we take it down or leave it the same?
Does, any past claims gonna be reflected in this number?
It depends.
That's, that's, that's kinda what I'm asking.
I don't know where that, that's, that's...
Would that shake out here?
No, you're gonna...
Totally separate.
That'd be totally separate.
So why don't we take it down?
That's gonna be totally separate.
I do not hold on to that, that's, go though.
But it would all be retro.
That's gonna have to go first.
It'd go for almost a year.
I don't think that long anymore.
Not anymore.
No, they cut it back.
Twenty-nine weeks.
I don't remember exactly, but, you know, it'll be...
Then anything old would, all right, then everything old would be exhausted.
You want to just leave it?
Well, I don't know if some of this can go, if, if there is a claim, if some of that could go towards this.
I don't know. I think you're gonna have to do a separate, you're gonna have to do a reserve.
Yeah, or it's gonna be a judgment, and it's gonna get raised on the recap.
Yep.
So do you wanna load by ten?
Yeah.
So we'll go twenty thousand even?
Yeah. Uh, that nine percent estimated from Maya, that's high, isn't it?
Oh, the new number from Maya, it's only five point two-three percent.
That's what I thought.
So, one million four sixty-five, one eighty-five.
One million four sixty-five, one eighty-five.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, life insurance, twelve hundred, Medicare, fifty-five hundred.
Twelve thousand.
At fifty-five thousand. Easy, all you wills. Then, not us.
Trying to save money, not quite that way.
Liability. Is that staying the same? You don't need that to go up? Oh, okay. All right, amount to be determined by, um, stable, for the stabilization, okay? And, um, that two thousand dollars is the, used to be for the court judgment, but now we have to set aside so much money for this oped liability, so, um...
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so we, am I talking into...
Yeah, you're dropping some little numbers?
Two hundred dollars. I gave that out of my pocket. Two hundred thousand dollars going through.
I'm with you, Kim, I'm getting exhausted. Um, so we're switching that line item from the court judgment to, um, the oped liability.
Okay.
All right.
So I have a total now for unclassified of two million nine eighty-nine, five one one point three eight.
And I agree on operating?
Twenty-two million, five hundred forty-one thousand, five oh two point six nine. Twenty-two, five four one, five oh two point six nine.
All right, capital. Anything else up with, going into capital? All right. Capital equipment?
Capital equipment.
Everybody all right with that?
Yeah, I don't have any, not having issues.
I don't know, no.
Yeah, um, right here, unless, oh, you...
I'm talking where we are, there is an asterisk down here, yeah, new requests.
What do we say, there's no new request this year, correct? It just, uh, no, sorry, let me take that back. Except for the water department, correct?
Well, water department is looking for a van.
Gary? Looking for his SUV.
SUV, IV pumps, and a portion of the self-contained breathing apparatus, twenty, uh...
Twenty-four units.
But not twenty-four this year.
No, we have two options, they're gonna be replaced by twenty nineteen. I figured we do a station each year to lessen the impact on the overall budget. So we do station three this year, we do station one next year, because engine ones do be replaced next year also. We time to replace those yet packs, then do station two the following year.
So what should, how many are you doing this, this year? How many are you asking for?
Five.
Five.
That, that completes station three.
Twenty-four, we're talking five minutes. The number's the same though, right, the thirty-five thousand?
Yes, they're about, they're about seven thousand, okay, so, well, you wanna add a state bond?
Okay.
And then those cruises, right?
Yeah, the same, the same amount of, that we've previously funded, um, a total of eighty-seven, one eighty-nine. Thirty-one, seven twenty-seven would be new leases for FY eighteen, the other four are on the industry leases.
All right.
So what's that total capital number?
Well, what do you wanna do about the IT equipment? Do you wanna keep it in there or take it out? It's in there for seventeen two ten.
It's not in there yet, we, it was in a budget and we...
We still don't know what that equipment, that money's for, right?
Not specifically, no.
Because we did the, the servoparm last year. We did transfers because it went down halfway through the year.
See, we just asked every department to give us a schedule of what they're gonna, what the money is used for, and now we're blindly saying, it could be not enough money, it could be way too much money, I have no idea, no idea.
Andrew Coho.
But then you don't wanna leave no money there.
No, you have that emergency money.
Emergency money, so...
So it was seventy-one, what was it, seventy-one thou, seventy-one hundred?
Seventeen thousand two hundred and ten.
See, that's way too much money.
Seventeen thousand. Can't you just put in reserve? So you know what's going on?
We can put ten, I...
I think ten thousand.
I think we, if we put ten in there, but we need to get whomever we decide, in whichever direction we decide to go in, to give us an update on, on what they're gonna purchase and when.
If we're gonna go to a cloud system, if we're gonna do, we need to explore all that, so...
And she, Ally has information on that?
She's done it to me.
Okay, good, good.
I think, I think ten thousand's fair to start, if we need to do a reserve fund transfer to, to, Mr. Grunwald's point, we, we did.
Or if we, if we see that it's not enough money, then in the fall, we can...
We can adjust in the fall, too.
We can revisit it and look at it, once we get a schedule of what this is for. Not that we're not supposed to do that, but I mean, this is something that we have no idea right now, so, let's put it to ten.
We have the mechanism to increase it if an emergency arises, so...
Right.
Kim, do we have revenue numbers, projected revenues against this and all that?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we project revenues for the next two years or anything like that, three years? You know?
I thought we had this conversation, someone said that has to come from the assessor's office, so, I can, I can do some of it, but... Okay, so the new capital budget, um, and again, let me just, I just wanna clarify, you only are interested in leasing the cruisers, the other items that are scheduled, that are on this schedule will be at outright purchase? Is that correct?
Yeah, why are you doing that?
Doing what?
Buying your SUV.
Buying your S-SUV.
Oh, I don't, we, we don't want to lease, so just buy it outright, leasing it is for me.
Well, did you look into it already, and it's thirty-seven, the number?
That's just the price of, of the car, we have to, we have to figure out what the payments are gonna be. I didn't, I didn't predict it out, we never met during the budget season.
Yeah, we did meet with him.
No one had any questions, that's why.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought we met with the major budget.
But I can, I can have them run the numbers out, I'll give, give emails to you folks if you want.
And that water department truck, we wanna buy it as opposed to lease it, even though police cars per each are less.
I thought the, yeah.
Yeah, and...
Well, that's gonna need more...
I was under the impression that the smaller vehicles, we're gonna, we're gonna lease them, we're just gonna buy it outright. On the smaller vehicles, I, I know Bill's in the fire trucks, I expect...
Since when is thirty-seven thousand and fifty thousand dollars a smaller vehicle?
Oh, you, fuck, they're paying for a five hundred thousand dollar fire truck.
Uh, to a point where the mileage isn't equivalent to a cruiser, cruiser miles have the highest miles.
Yeah.
You turn those back in. We're actually, we don't, we don't, we keep close end leases, but...
We keep them for a dollar, but, yeah.
The low, the, the high, those vehicles aren't gonna have the mileage, they should be lasting years.
Yeah, I mean, all right.
If you wanna break it off with...
No, I don't, I just, I just didn't know if he had hard numbers.
Okay.
And you don't, okay.
So back to that total.
Yes, we're gonna leave everything the same, as is, plus a ten.
Four thirty-four.
Nine one two eight six.
Nine one two four eight six.
Nine one two eight six.
Same number, just ten thousand.
All right.
You want, oh wait a minute, you want me to leave ten thousand in for the replacement equipment for the computer? Okay, so the difference is seven thousand, it's lower by seven, right? Or did you want me to take it?
Was the seventeen in this?
Oh, because you're working off a new budget, we're working off an old budget.
Oh, okay.
That's why. But we came, we came with the same number, so we're good.
Same number, four.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you have the new number in there, we don't, so that's why we're adding ten.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, so in my conversation, and I know when we met... All right, um, so in my conversation, and I know we met with the COA, um, they were talking about the freezer? Okay, so, we said that we would put it into the capital, should it go capital equipment or capital...
Well, is it gonna be permanently attached to the building or is it movable?
No, I think it's...
If it's attached to the building, it should be part of the capital improvement.
Improvement, okay.
For building and other properties.
Dimension's about like an eight by fifteen or something like that.
It's twenty thousand dollars.
You're blocking?
Yeah, huge. Because I guess the problem is, is that they keep getting free food and nowhere to store.
They want a freezer or a refrigerator?
Freezer. I'm not sure, because it's not always frozen goods.
It's gonna be if they put it in. But you can freeze everything.
Well, you're gonna put...
Well, you can't freeze milk.
Eighty heads of lettuce in the freezer. I don't know what they were talking about, I... Well, what, we could put freezer or refrigerator, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it, then, the bottom line is it's twenty thousand.
Twenty should include the installation.
He said the padding, the electrical, and the freezer.
Square, a section just like that right there and make it... Okay. So, that, that will sell as a jog beer?
Do you know what that's gonna do? Increase the square footage of the new senior center? So, watch out.
Uh, it's, would you take out a little corner like that?
Whoever.
Uh, it, yeah, it's gonna change the capacity of this room. There's gonna be less people.
Well, we can fit people in the freezer.
All right, plus there's a closet around the corner you gotta get into.
Okay, um...
Don't know.
All right, and then, she's gonna add twenty, and then, we also added the, um, windows from the old schoolhouse on to here, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, can you tell me what this thirty thousand dollars is? Because there's, again, no explanation of what is going on with that.
Library windows are in there. Well...
No, those are library windows. Or schoolhouse windows.
We had a line here plumbing replacement.
Item, we'll tell you. Are we upgrading the system, are we, do we, does anybody know what that?
That's what Mr. Barbados submitted.
Yep.
Yeah, they've had some clog issues lately, but I don't know.
I don't know what the number is for either.
A lot of clogging, huh?
Yeah.
I do recall them saying that one of the fixtures needed to be replaced, and because of the age of the building and the way that the floor had been built or something like that, it was gonna be more than just replacing the fixture.
It's not a standard installation.
No. But, to, to the extent of what has to get done, I don't know, I just remember that coming up in the conversation.
They use a lot for a toilet.
It better be a golden throne.
It is.
Those toilet toilets are really nice.
Flooring, what do you need flooring for?
I, I did not do that, that wasn't me, I don't know where that came from, because it says, um, Station Three, and that floor was done this year.
Okay, so that can come off?
I don't, I didn't put that in there, I, I, I took it, the, uh, those were specifical batteries, I don't know what, what was there.
I, I asked them when we came in tonight, just to get a head start like that.
And police station insulation design and implementation? Are, are we really gonna, I mean, Charlie, what do you feel about that? Because are we really gonna stop throwing money after, into a building that hopefully in it eighteen, eighteen months to two years we're gonna be done with?
No, you said you're keeping it for something else, but it would depend on what you're keeping it for.
Right, exactly.
If it's storage, you probably don't need it, if you're gonna put people in there, you might want to.
Insulation design and implementation.
My thought was wait until whoever's, we decide it's happening.
We don't have any asbestos in that building, so, we're gonna be airing it, right? For the twenty thousand dollars?
Okay, so the ten thousand dollars for us, uh, flooring is coming out, and the twenty thousand dollars for insulation design and implementation is coming out. But we're adding twenty thousand dollars for the COA freezer, and we're adding, um, the, uh, old schoolhouse windows.
What are you gonna do about the transfer station concrete for bays for the roll-off containers for twenty?
I didn't see, we didn't question those.
Oh.
So, those will stay in it.
Yeah.
How much was the freezer?
Twenty.
Is that a real stick number? Twenty thousand dollars for freezer?
It was, that included, yeah, we did a sixteen, almost seventeen thousand for the freezer, plus the electrical, plus the padding, so, yeah.
Wow.
Well, it's gonna be an outside, so it's gonna be an outside freezer.
Outside, yeah.
So, we basically didn't net anything, twenty minus, twenty plus ten is thirty. And he's hitting twenty for that and...
Yeah, that's one...
We're actually gonna go up by two thousand now.
How much was the windows again?
Twelve four.
Twelve.
Twelve four.
Okay.
Twelve four.
Yeah, so we're gonna go up.
Yeah, right here.
Thirty-two four.
No, well, that's our, twelve four is here.
I said that same thing, that's gonna be a lighter, that's the old...
That's the, that's an old one.
Well, you're on the new sheet.
You're on a new one, Charlie, I get the same problem over here, but yeah.
Piece of money, don't know. Because, because we've made all the notes on...
Yeah, I know, I know.
Do we all have the same total, eighty-seven thousand, four hundred?
Sounds good, yeah.
Really?
How about we, we go, we walk back?
You wanna go back through this? Okay, let's, let's...
It should be a net increase of two thousand dollars, two thousand four and dollars.
For when we walk by.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
There's thirty thousand for the plumbing.
Plumbing, twenty thousand for the freezer.
Seventy, eighty, yeah.
Twenty-five for the concrete bays, twelve four for the historic schoolhouse.
Yep.
Eighty-seven four.
Eighty-seven four.
Yep. So, we ready for grand, grand total?
Yep.
Grand total.
Oh, I'm not ready, hang on.
Big fanfare in there.
I know, big letdown, I'm sorry.
You wanna give us total capital first, or, uh, is that easier, or, you won't apply that already?
Yeah, eighty-seven four.
Eighty-seven four. You wrote that, yeah, I think eighty-seven four.
Yeah, I got that, but... We also had the capital equipment for our total capital budget, which would have been down here.
Uh, we do it two separate, uh...
He's adding, he wants to have the two thousand.
All right, yeah.
I don't know, okay.
No, I'm gonna give it to you, just, patience, my friend.
Patience is a thing.
Yes, yes.
Okay, total capital, five hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and eighty-six cents. Grand total omnibus budget, twenty-three million, sixty-three thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Twenty-three.
Two-three, zero-six-three, eight-one-five, point five-five.
And then zeros thrown in.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-three oh sixty-three.
Total capital.
Twenty-three million, sixty-three dollars.
No, 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 total capital.
Oh, I'm sorry, two-five, excuse me.
Two, three one two, eighty?
Six. I can read my paper.
Lost the number, is it?
Oh, yeah.
So, from the omnibus, what do we have left over?
Before, uh, without articles?
Yeah.
Five hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Five twenty-five. Articles, okay. I think there's an equip.
Yeah.
I know, it's a special you are.
You're gonna enjoy it, you're gonna take your time.
All right, um... We actually already did all of them.
Oh. If I can go back to one item.
You can.
And that is the water article.
The special water article or the other water?
Well, yes.
Bye, Gary.
Six hundred, six hundred and some thousand dollars, water article.
So, that's the annual town meeting, I think it's eighteen...
Well, are we gonna, we, we're gonna go up and get there, but can we go?
One by one.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're definitely gonna get there.
Oh, I, I thought, no, I thought because we had already gone through them, that we were...
I thought you were saying we could do more.
Well, let's just make sure, uh, everybody's all set with everything on special, right? I know, because we are, we have to vote on this at the end of the night, so...
Um, the question I had, no, don't mind.
Special's fine. Um, we are gonna have discussion about another article, too.
Like the special with sixty-five thousand water, is staying on special or...
On special from stabilization.
Not the transfer.
Not the transfer, we did not want the transfer, did not present it to you.
Just clearing that.
All right, so what is on the most... Tunes of salaries? We didn't change the town clerk or anything, right? Highway surveyor?
No, everybody, all of this is in, should be in the omnibus.
It mirrors what we just did in the omnibus, right?
Should be.
Okay.
Um, we voted on every, well, you're voting on it, but...
Three's good, four's good.
Yep.
Five, six...
What else had with the water ones? Um, and you changed the, uh... The numbering of the articles according to what Mark wanted, right? How about, especially with the water in sewer?
I believe they're correct.
Okay, yeah, all right. Yeah, I think you're right, Charlie, the only one that we need, that you want to discuss is the six sixty, that's fine.
It was eighteen, it's still a six fifty. Page nine.
Yep.
Now, I believe when we discussed it, um, when they presented it to us, we broke it up.
At the very bottom.
This is the new one today.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, it, I think that one, they kind of...
Yeah, they were gonna do it by two, yeah, all right. Go ahead.
Um, when we discussed it, we had broken up that, the one that three million, we broke up to the six fifty, and then put the rest off the annual town, now, fall town meeting, sorry.
If necessary.
And I believe we said to have them put it through capital stabilization, six fifty. The amendment does not leave that way.
Who's gonna read?
That they were clicked, they're trying to borrow the money.
And the water pollution data trust.
And Bob never showed up to...
Eighteen, article eighteen, since we had the...
Here, I'll let you read the new one.
So...
It starts off right here.
Is this the new one?
It is. It starts there and goes on to the next page, it's quite word.
Who changed that? They did? They submitted this article?
When was this change done?
Uh, last, what, Friday, and then I sent it to Mark. They submitted it to me, and then I forwarded it to Mark.
Yeah, I think they're born that Friday, was that correct?
They were supposed to.
Uh, no, actually, I think they submitted it to me, Bob submitted it to me Thursday, I think, actually. They submit, they, they didn't meet. I don't believe they met before they submitted.
Do you know why they changed, Jack?
No, to, yeah, no, I don't.
I know that Bob Parker was talking with Ryan, um, environmental partners, I would think it was probably his recommendation.
Might be wanting to borrow loan interest or something, maybe, could that be it?
Uh, well, it's fairly easy to borrow from the investment trust, um, rates are usually pretty competitive.
I just don't want this to be vice versa, right? So, we, we said that we would do this, six sixty, and then, what, if they had to build a building or whatever else, I was gonna come on their shoulders, because...
Some of it needs to be borne by them, so...
Absolutely, so, I hope it's not like reverse, like, we'll take care of the six sixty, and if the building's two million...
You take the two point four million.
You take the two million, because that's not gonna happen.
When we sat with them, this is what, we all were in consensus, but at least to me, my knowledge, and they were pulling out of capital...
I totally agree.
Capital stabilization, so we're not borrowing the money, we already have capital stabilization set.
Well, one thing...
I'd like to see somebody here to explain things to us.
Well, and the thing is, is that we have to vote on this because we're gonna get it on the street.
Bob was supposed to be, put it to, um...
I mean, just to say, if, if you go through with this borrowing, you could still fund the payments through capital stabilization, if you wanted to do that.
On a separate, not a new town meeting, it would have to be the fall town meeting, right? Or you're saying...
No, no, you'd fund it as part of the operating, you know what I mean? You'd fund it each year as a transfer.
I thought it was just gonna be like a one and done deal.
That's what I thought it was, why pay the extra interest if we're gonna do it?
Right. I could wake somebody up.
Pretty one, Lisa.
Well, since the chairman's not here, who's next in command? Mr. Sadek?
Because I, I don't know.
Paul? It's not the chair, really.
Right.
You have Bob's number, you have Bob's number?
No, I don't.
I don't.
I don't either.
We can ask Paul Sadek for Paul's number and...
It's just, this is eleven hour, it's just, this is the kind of stuff that shouldn't be happening right now.
I even questioned my sort of draft, why it wasn't through capital stabilization. One of the members, actually, it wasn't a member of the board. He said, oh, we're redoing that, we'll have a new one over Friday, and this is...
All right, in the meantime, um...
Anything else on here?
Yeah, there's, we, we need to talk about that land article.
The land article, three hundred fifty thousand?
Did you guys get that, um, email today?
No.
All right, the, the...
Gay, gay, gay.
Cast, cast, remember, we voted last year to put this on, and it totally went through, it...
Did we vote to put it on this meeting?
We, we voted to put it on for the annual town meeting.
Which way?
The Packer, Packer Drive.
Turn it over the land to the town?
Yeah, we talked about that last year.
Yep.
So, and we voted at that time, or we at least said that we were going to put it on for the annual town meeting, and it just... You can look in the minutes, it just never got to there, because it kind of fell through the cracks, so... What happened was, the, you know it, okay, all right.
I got, I got the gist of the story.
Who needs that? The casters live here, the land way down there, it doesn't...
Right, and it's, that's a tax help.
Right.
Can we put that on this one?
We need to put it on.
I, I have no problem with that. Basically, Barico is gonna save this money for going to tax time or anything like that, so...
Can you send it to Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No answer?
I didn't call, because you...
Paul, if you can call Paul.
I didn't call Paul.
Are anyone else?
You said not to call.
No, 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 call, call.
We were gonna call Bob first, but we don't have Bob's numbers. Anything else on here that's sticky with it? Twenty-one, twenty-two?
Hi, Jerry.
Hi there. Hey, we're at the meeting and Bob didn't show up. So, we have, we have a question for you, since we don't have his number, okay? Ask away.
Why is the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars going through bond and not coming out of capital stabilization?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Is that how it was reviewed?
Yep.
You said?
Is that, is that the position of the board, is it should be out of, we, we, when we met, we discussed it being out of capital stabilization and-
Yeah, it was, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And-
We haven't discussed taking a bond for that.
Tran has got it, uh, under water pollution abatement trust bond.
What, what was that?
Mark Tran, his draft is, uh, through water pollution abatement trust, in a bond.
Ryan?
Ryan.
Ryan.
I'm sorry, Ryan.
Ryan Reagan?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, well, that was, that was for the whole building.
So all he changed was the number?
All he changed was the number, okay.
That was for the whole building.
All right, that makes sense, Paul.
That was for three dollars, for three million.
Okay.
He's had us breaking up.
Okay, yeah, okay.
That makes sense, all right, thank you.
That because you're gonna sit for, on the capital stabilization, I don't know why it's written that way.
Okay, we'll fix it.
Okay, we're good.
Just fix it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I write it, I write it to the smartest lady, holy smoke.
For the record, we should say what we did, you know.
All right, for the record, we just got clarification on, on one of the articles, so we called the number of the water board and, um, got cap, clarification, and it goes along with what we had all agreed upon at a previous meeting, that it will come out of a capital stabilization, the six hundred and fifty, so, thousand dollars, okay?
Just so we're, we're clear.
Okay, so now you wanna talk about it further?
Well, well, just so we're clear.
Mm-hmm.
This six hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be basically our share of this project as, as, as to tax, right, right now at least, as to taxpayers' input.
Exactly.
In general tax.
That's it.
Okay.
Because I-
I'm good with that.
I think that we all have said that, that they need to step up and do the rest of it.
I, I, I don't have a problem with revisiting this to some extent, if we actually-
Actually, we'll have those discussions once it's time for the fall town meeting.
I'm good with, okay, I'm good with that.
That's how I see it, Charlie.
Yep.
All right, so, okay, go ahead, yes. So the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is to replace the pipes in the water filtration system? If that works, then they may not have to do any more work over there. If it doesn't work, then they're gonna have to go forward and do part two of that. Part two is the difference between the three million and the six sixty, which, that will be their portion, well, we can have further discussion, but as we had discussed, as we currently are speaking, that would be their portion of it, so that we would take-
And it'll go to six hundred?
Yeah, the six fifty.
They, they have calcs that say that the increased diameter of the size of the pipes and all, all that will-
Is gonna help all of that.
They will bring it down and may not, we may not e and e out, so, they're, now they're gonna test it to prove all that theory.
Okay, but the six hundred thousand, we're asking the town to pay for this.
That's out of capital stabilization.
Out of capital stabilization, it's already money set aside.
It's already set aside.
Well, that's semantics here, isn't it? I mean, it's capitalization money for the town.
Yep.
And we're going to, the town, it will fund its enterprise.
We'll supplement, we'll supplement the budget for the, for the six hundred and fifty thousand.
But, as far as, again, as far as we're concerned, at this point in time, that's, that's the taxpayer portion of it, because after that, it's gonna have to be borne by the enterprise then, and they would have to borrow.
What kind of explanation do we have for the taxpayer? Why are we funding an enterprise fund? That shouldn't be a taxpayer problem.
Well, I'll, I'll address that a little bit.
Go ahead.
I, I, I see your point, okay, but on one hand, this is an investment that other people may, uh, use, well, are going to use in the future, because the water, the water system's gonna expand, okay? And so I, I see it being, I, Georgia, I, I look at things, I, I wanna be fair to everybody, okay? And just to your point, like, to put it on four, to begin with, to put it on four hundred customers or, or-
Let me just interrupt you there.
Well, no, 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 I, I, I-
We can reran the numbers, and we saw the impact on the users. Can I know if you saw the numbers?
I, I, I-
It's minimal. Minimal.
Well, in my, in my little numbers, George, it came to like four, four twenty-five per customer, okay? Uh, four hundred and twenty-five dollars a year per customer, I know it's not gonna be that much, okay? We're, we're, we're on this, we're trying to get to the same goal in general, I think, George, but you and I are coming on different angles. One, one of the things we gotta remember is that we put a pumping station in over on Chippeway Road a number of years ago, and everybody in the, uh, fund paid for that.
We got Charlie all part of that.
Yeah.
I got Charlie.
Oh, so, so, I, I don't think we should look at anything but as a whole system problem, and then I, I think the fact of the matter is, we have to look at the fact that as we expand, expand the system, and we should be expanding the system, there'll be more customers in-
And more business, more business, that's the biggest, that's the biggest part of it.
I, I don't know for sure, I understand that the, the base, the, the water rates should really be looked at seriously, um, because it doesn't appear that they're using best practices in the water department, uh, now, and that, that's one of the things that I, I, I wanna put the brakes on here. I don't think that things are being operated the way they should for everyone in the whole, whole community. That's, that's my point.
Okay.
All right, question. Now, you say it's gonna cost so much per customer on this, you're talking about-
Well, well, I, I just, it, I-
I mean, or are we gonna break it down based on usage?
Well, I, that's, actually, that's not for us, that's for the wire.
Yeah, all right, I understand, all right.
And all I, all I did can, in that, in figuring out in my mind is, is a ballpark figure.
Gotcha.
That, like, even to say, that four twenty-five for, for a person like you shouldn't be, it shouldn't be four twenty-five.
Cause my bill is three sixty-nine a month.
Right, okay.
Yeah, four hundred and twenty-five bucks for, I mean, that's insane.
If you look at the sheets we put together before-
Yeah, I know, I, I was-
The amount was a tenth of what you just quoted.
Right.
Forty dollars a year per residential customer.
Okay, right, if you use-
Because the business has used seventy percent.
Yeah, all, all I, George, was that, I, I put user to, just so we got, what, what we, I'm talking to, you know, we can get more, I, I can get complex.
Well, you simplify it too much, and what happens is, it looks like four hundred dollars per user, and then we have, I have a number, X number of businesses, they could use seventy percent of the water.
Right.
And if you, well, no point.
They, they should pay seventy percent of that.
Right, I, I think it should be, I, I agree with you, George, in the end, it's gotta be on usage, we, we gotta, we, we can't- Right, I know what you're saying, I, I'm just saying, the, the, uh, whole, the whole finance has to be on usage.
Yeah, it is.